He will be here. So I need to make the three announcements and y'all bear with me if my confusion, please tell me. We will be joined by the Board of Supervisors Chair from District. Board of Supervisors person. But District One, Mr. Johnson, by Zoom tonight. While this meeting is being held in person. The meeting is entitled will be streamed on the county's YouTube channel available at HTTPS colon backslash, I'm sorry, four slash four slash WWW dot YouTube dot com. Forward slash C forward slash Orange County, Virginia's Limited Impairance, the CD will be available. All the things I just read off are actually on the website if you didn't check the YouTube channel for those that may be listening. Tonight we have a lot of things to cover, a lot of ground to cover. We're going to move along expeditiously. It is our job as the planning commission to hear and give everybody a fair shake at what they're proposing. But it's not our job to stay on one point all night long. This is one of several maybe work sessions we will have on one big development. Northern end of the county. I will certainly say this to us. When the chair says that says let's move on, we're going to need to move on tonight on a lot of different things. That's statement one. We do have a quorum, an attendance, four out of five are here now. Can we have approval of the agenda with moving? Seven A up top. So we can take care of a little bit of business like the bylaws, but. If we approve the agenda, please move seven A up top. And if any other commissioner has any other suggestions, let me know.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, moving item number seven, making it the new item number three. On the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor to say aye. Opposed? Aye, secure it. Now if we could have the approval of. I'm sorry, let's do the bylaws. Just messing up here. The bylaws amendment on on remote participation is needed so that in event that we cannot be here or we want to join when we're not here. We will have a bylaw that covers us. Mr. Lansing, give us 30 seconds or less if you can on the bylaw and we will. Go along if I have to conclude.
Sure, I I think y'all already have an understanding of the basic purpose of this. So this is something that we've needed for a while, but we haven't really needed because we had the community of government ordinance, which just made it unnecessary. But now that that ordinance has expired, we'll need specific provisions in our bylaws to allow any kind of remote participation. It's important to note that if you want to approve this today, you need to take two different votes. One of them is to waive the 30 day notice requirement. If that vote should fail by any chance, then you'll just you'll need to move the other vote to approve the bylaws amendment itself. To sometime in well, your first meeting in November. So two votes, one to waive the 30 day notice requirement and one to actually adopt the amendment itself.
And just to note this, I think this will help all of us at some get a time so that if we want to constitute a quorum. Now can we constitute a quorum by Zoom this way also?
Uh, no, you have to have a quorum that's physically assembled.
At least if we got three here, the other two can join remotely.
That's right. That's right.
I solicit a motion to waive the 30 day wait on the bylaw limit of remote participation. But hold just a second. Let him get settled and we will back up just 10 seconds and tell him where we're voting on it. I think he'll fall running. Oh, you finally explained that you did the best you can with what you had to work with. So what Mr. Lansing has said to us that in order for us to approve the bylaw. Amendment on remote participation, we have to waive the 30 day rule. So the first motion would be to waive the 30 day rule. The second motion would be to accept the bylaw of remote participation. That's where we're at now. We. Did we get a motion?
I'll make the motion to waive the 30 day notice requirements.
I second that motion.
So it's the movement, second day, we waived the 30 day motion requirement. All in favor to say aye? All opposed? Carry your narrative. Now we need a motion to institute the bylaw amendment on remote participation.
I'm making the motion to adopt the amendment amendment.
Is there? It's been moved to second that we adopt the bylaws amendment on remote participation. All in favor to say aye? All opposed? Most encouraged unanimously. Okay. Now if we could have approval of the minutes on September 16th, our legal meeting. And just before we approve those, I did, I made myself a video. I think two different ways minutes were sent out. We could do, we could do almost verbatim minutes. When Tracy spends four hours. Hearing verbatim, we say typing in everything it says, or she can do a. Synopsis of what was said. A synopsis of what she said. So as we approve these minutes, I just want us to think about what's, what would be our policy? Wouldn't we determine that the county was doing, tell us? Wouldn't we determine the county was doing? Were they doing synopsis at their hearings?
Yes, sir. It is much more of a summary method and in fact, in the end, we just, we determined it was most prudent to kind of split the baby on this one. Send out one version of the minutes for your consideration. And it certainly is not a verbatim transcript, but it has a little more detail than we might otherwise have provided. So I think on this one, we were able to to kind of hit it on the mark. But we would love to have a sense of the commissioners. If you would prefer a little more detail when people speak to some items in detail or a little less detail along the lines of. Gentleman or woman, A or B, in favor or in opposition.
Legally, the transcript that the county maintains of the minute minute video is a legal basis.
Correct. I'm sorry, Mr. Yancey, I have just that question.
The question is, the legal basis of doing this is that we have a transcript available online of the actual meeting. That will legally qualify.
The legal basis for posting any verbatim minutes for not.
For not us proposing.
Yeah, we're legally not, we're not legally required to post verbatim minutes.
But we have that.
We certainly have that option.
Somebody wants to come in and listen to it.
That's correct.
So just so you all know, and I don't know whether we, Robert's Rules of Order actually says that. Minutes don't have to be verbatim. They can just be, they're actually supposed to be just actions. That's what they typically say that whatever the act of the commission was, that's what we need to capture in our minutes. What someone said or did not say is not necessary for minutes. And I did that research on my own because I just really wanted to know. And the only coming out of the world where when we interview people, you would have to say exactly what they said for court. If you miss something, you can paint something. And that was my concern that if you went verbatim and somebody accidentally misheard something. They could throw the whole thing. I didn't say it that way. So this is how it is.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So the intent of the county, we're going to keep live streaming our meetings, right?
That's right.
Okay, so my opinion is we're fine with the summary.
That's right.
Because the the detail, it's not only going to take more time for Tracy to do it, but there's going to be more discussion here about whether they're correct or not correct. And the reality is. And the reality is it's on YouTube. They've got captions. You can, you can turn on captions and I think that's sufficient. I think personally, I think the summary is fine.
So approval of September 16th meeting, is there, is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Should move the second, approve those minutes. All in favor? In opposition, that motion moves. We're going to a public comment. We would ask that if anyone signed up for public comment, if you have not signed up, but you want to make a public comment. You can come up now if you got three to five minutes to make a comment. Please do not comment on anything that's on the agenda. We will take that up as appropriate time. Do have some business here that doesn't require us to have a actual hearing, public hearing, but we will just the public comment if there is any at this time.
Mr. Chairman, did you mean to say that they can comment on what's on the agenda, just not if it's already up for public hearing this evening?
That's right. Did I not say it that way?
You did. I'm just going to declare.
Public comment. Close. There, there are no public hearings on the move that you don't. There, so we scratched that one. Now we move to the work session for the rezoning of 21 dash zero one, Walworths Crossing. I have gone over the ground rules with the county and I have gone over the ground rules with the advocate. And for the commissioners' information, the county will go forward, being Mr. Leslie was come up and give us a brief summary of what he knows. As he's coming up, we do have bullet points from the Board of Supervisors. After Josh gets finished, Mr. Johnson is going to help us with the bullet points from the board. Then we're going to move to the applicant and then we're going to have an open work session. Let me. Call you before you comment if it looks like it's getting confusing because I just don't want everybody talking at one time. So. And let's try to get one thing answered there. Mr. Johnson, you still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. All right, now we see you again. All right, Mr. Leslie is on you with 6:15. I'm hoping to move you down by 6:25. I gave you two. I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Supervisor Johnson, if you will, if you don't mind, I will take off my mask first for remarks. So thank you for remarks at the podium. It might be a little easier for our other speaker as well, if he's comfortable with that. My remarks are brief. This planning commission work session, as you said, is scheduled in three parts. The first part is just a staff update on activities since the meeting with the commission on September 16th. The second is applicant remarks and presentation, and the last is the balance of the time for your discussion. So. This is a work session on rezoning 2102, which is in District Four. It's known as Walworth's Crossing. And just as a reminder, this is a rezoning of 2,618.5 acres, 20 parcels total. In aggregate that are zoned presently agricultural A, general industrial I two, residential R one, and general commercial C two. To the planned development excuse district PD. So in the staff update here, just identify blue, white, and orange, those items that are. Have occurred since September 16th. There was a letter from the planning commission that was, that was the applicant that stated September 22nd. It was a board of supervisors work session on September the 28th. The applicant submitted a phasing plan on October the 5th. Board supervisors had a work session on October the 5th. Applicant provided responses to the letter to the commission as well as to the application of review committee. And into a memo that we had prepared to the board. Identifying the dramatic wilderness area plan goals, objectives, and components of this application. And so this evening you have a planning commission work session scheduled. And in future, there is a intention to have a joint. Board supervisors planning commission work session, which is to be scheduled. So that is essentially the staff update on the timeline of events that occurred since your last work session, your last meeting on 16th. And if there are any questions about those, I'll be happy to speak to those. And just a reminder, as you're looking at this particular screen, these two items, the phasing plan and the board of supervisors work session. Have hyperlinks to those materials. So if you want to go to those slides that were presented specifically at the board supervisor's work session, we can do that. Or if you want to look at the phasing plan, we can do that. Although I will note, this link to the phasing plan goes directly to one of the slides that is in the applicant's presentation. We have all the additional application materials in PDF. So if you want to bring those up onto the screen, we can do that. But just keep it at a high level. All the materials then published and available. So again, happy to bring them up individually if you would like. I would answer any questions from you that say that that's the end of the staff remarks.
Holding position there. Mr. Johnson, is there anything you want to add in reference to what we, you all discussed in the board meeting?
Well, I I think that. The the bullet points that Allison sent out, which I think everybody has did a very good job of that. I would, I guess I would, I would just very briefly to maybe boil them down even further. From the board standpoint, we're very concerned about Route Three and the impact on Route Three. We don't want to see stores fronting on Route Three. We prefer to have them front on the parkway. And when I say stores, I mean the the development, the commercial development. We are very concerned about Route Three. It's obviously not in ideal condition already, and so we don't want to make it any worse. We we set kind of a only one additional traffic light standard here. Meaning that some of them may get moved around. They may get moved from one place on Route Three to another, but just a sort of a net. Addition of of one more traffic light on Route Three. The phasing is obviously extremely important. We want to get, we want to make sure we don't get the cart before the horse. We need the commercial development to be in the, in the, the, at least the beginning of the commercial development to be in the very first phase. And we we need to make sure that we're remembering that this is a mixed use development and therefore we want to see mixed use. We don't want to have different uses sitting next to each other because that's not really mixed used because that's, that's kind of the way the world already is. So we want to see something that that really integrates the different uses so that, you know, for instance, you know. Stores on the ground floor, living apartments, places for people to live above. Very concerned in terms of the housing itself, that that there be places for working people to live. Particularly the employees of the, of the various businesses that are planned. Feel it's very important that there be, whether they're apartments or or. Townhouses, small homes, whatever, that there be a lot of attention paid to that, a lot of concern given to that. Public use is a very important component and one that I think so far we haven't. We've got, there's I think roughly 25 acres set aside for school. There's a like area set aside for recreation. But we're going to need, we're going to also need things for perhaps a new sheriff substation or a new EMS station. There was talk about not necessarily a library in the conventional sense, but some type of place where people can go for electronic. Access. And of course RSA is going to be providing the water and sewer and they're going to need some, some property. So we need to make sure that we build adequate. Build that into the plan that there's going to be adequate space for these public uses. And then the, the last thing I'll mention is. We. We are strongly in believe that there needs to be an area set aside for. And and don't, don't hone in too much on the words I use. Just think about the idea that I'm trying to to convey. Either some kind of corporate campus or a business park, an industrial park, something like that that will be. Not commercial, not residential, obviously, but more of a, of a, you know, like I said, of some type of economic development. Area. That's not, I think it's mentioned in the plan, but there's not really space set aside for it. And so that would be the fourth thing. I I think, I think those are four of the most important areas that from, that. The board feels very strongly about. I think if you go to Allison's bullet points, you'll see that. And of course she, she did a better job of it than I did, but those are the areas that I think the board really kind of honed in on and said, these are, these are very important. The, the number of housing units is obviously extremely important. And, and so when, when you're looking at this, I would, I would suggest that, you know, 4,750 has been put out there. That's not in stone. So need to, we need, that needs to be looked at very carefully also. I think that's about all I can add to it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Is there any question from the commission or either Mr. Johnson or Mr. Leslie? Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson, this is Brian Nickel. Quick question. I know we had a fairly significant discussion. Can you hear me?
That don't work. Can you hear Mark?
Yeah. Yes, I can, I can hear him. I can hear you.
I'm usually not one that has the trouble for people here. Mr. Johnson. Thank you for that update. It was very helpful. One thing we did talk about at the last work session, I want to preface my comments is with. This, I consider this a continuation of that work session with the board is talk about having a joint work session. I think that's excellent. Thank you for that. I think the ability for us to work together along with the applicant will be critical to the success and critical to our future. We had a lot of discussion centered around the notwithstanding clauses that were in the current proper. Which in my reading and I think in many readings would say whatever we approve, they can change based on the market condition or. Design change or something like that. Those sorts of statements are, we talked about as being unacceptable. Did the board have any discussion on the notwithstanding statements?
Yes, everything, I don't know if that we specifically discussed the the notwithstanding wording, but. All of this needs to be absolutely nailed down. Now, when I say absolutely nailed down, that doesn't mean that in some aspects of the plan, there's going to be. A certain amount of, of flexibility that needs to be built in because this is a 30 or 40 year plan. Who knows what's going to be going on 25 years from now. We may be, you know, building houses out of material that we're not even aware will exist now. So there's, there's going to be some flexibility, but on the major parts of this plan. So the number of houses, the number of dwelling units and, and, and those very important things, they need to be very well locked down. And yeah, I mean, as far as the board of supervisors is concerned, I don't, I don't believe, I think. We didn't really talk about it a whole lot because it's, it's kind of understood that that, that needs to be taken out and, and there needs to be. A very. Firm commitment on the part of the applicant that yes, these things will be done. And we're limiting it to X number of houses and there's going to be, you know. Various components that are absolutely going to happen and they're, they're not, they're not up for debate. Now, there does need to be, having said that, there does need to be something built into the plan that allows the applicant. In five years, 15 years, come back to the county and say, oops, this is not working. We, we need to see if we can't rework something. So that kind of flexibility needs to be in there, but not the kind of flexibility that just says, well, we changed our mind and so we're going to do something different.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Leslie or Mr. Johnson? All right, we would ask applicant to come forward. You can come as a group. You can come as individuals. 6:25. You have to be completed by 6:40. Hopefully you're done by 6:35. That's your, that's, go ahead.
I'm just going to come up, say a few words, introduce our team, and I'm going to let Charlie take it from there. But I just want to give you a little history. I want to, first of all, I want to thank you all for having us. We look forward to this process. And I can tell you, we've been working on it for 15 years and we've been through a downturn of the economy, a pandemic, and things have changed and needs have changed. And, and one thing that hasn't changed, the property we've actually been growing the project. So it started off with. Probably 1,800 acres and now, you know, over the last five years, enough 300 acres was purchased and another 200 acres was purchased to try to put this together so it could be something special. The, the history, the Kings have owned this property for approximately since the seventies. It was a hunting preserve. It was never, their, their dream to develop it at that time. But now that the G WAP has been adopted and they want to see it used to its highest best use and be an economic engine for the county and balance the tax base. We're trying to to do that, really a partnership with the county to figure out what the county wants and incorporate that into Walworth's Crossing. We, the Kings could have over the last 30 years, every upturn sold pieces of property off the road frontage to anything. I mean, food line could have actually not been where it's at. It was actually looking at another place on Route Three on their property, but they wanted it to be something special one day. So hopefully the appreciation is there, how they've kept this piece of property together and, and so they can be special because it could have been hot spots. Low line fruit could have been developed and it would have looked like the rest of Route Three that's down through there. I want you to know that I will have a vested interest in this project. The Kings feel that it needs to have local ownership and, and that's why I'm here. I'm going to be here and I'm going to live and die here. I can tell you, we're, we're heavily invested in Orange County, my wife and I. We own about a farm to golf course. We have Somerset Farms Golf Course. We own the Lux Grove Town Center. We own the US Post Office on Route Three. We own the Auto Zone on Route Three. Be honest with you, between the commercial holdings that we have on the eastern end of the county, so 140,000 square feet, which is probably just as much as that Walmart. We directly or indirectly employ over 400 people, all the businesses that we have to Lux Grove Town Center. So I, we've done a lot to, to invest in the county. We really want to continue that, that effort. I want to introduce our, I hope to go from there, just let you know, we look forward to this. Charlie Payne is our land use attorney who will be coming up. Keith Oster is our civil engineer. Zach Letty is on the Zoom meeting. He's our land planner. Zach has been with probably for 13 years going through the renderings of this. We just give you some history of the county. We took a bus trip with the county, went to Oyster Point, Newport News. We've been to Newtown with the county. We've been to Ensbroke. So we've all had a collaborative effort over the years trying to make this place very unique. Anyways, with others to introduce Charlie's.
Zach, I can't see you.
That's on me. So then we'll have to turn the slides. We'll have to see the people again.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
I'm not going to take time from the show.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should be.
I can see you here.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
Am I going to be able to do this? You will. It's when you're ready to put the slideshow back up, I'll do that.
And I'm sorry, I want to say our, our transportation engineers on, on, I didn't realize who's there. I didn't see the picture up there when I was up there. So we do have all our team.
That's Mr. Steven. And after Mr. Payne, you come up and if they want to talk, just say who's next behind you and then they can say who's behind them. So if someone's making notes, I know who's talking.
I think they'll be there just to answer some questions.
Okay.
If you have questions.
And if you need any help there.
I can do.
You can get it there. Okay, perfect. Yep, it'll show you the next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, of members of the planning commission and Supervisor Johnson and his staff. Thank you very much for your time this evening. It's very nice to meet you. I've been in Orange County a bunch of times, but I've never been here before you, so it's a pleasure for me to be here. And thank you Kenny for your introduction. Your, your lineage here in Orange County is certainly very important, important to me and our presentation here this evening. So, Mr. Chairman, I've got about 10 minutes. I'll be pretty quick. So the, the game plan here in this presentation is just to sort of get a 30,000 foot view of what we're proposing. I think you'll see that based on the comments that we've heard from the planning commission and from the ARC and also from the board supervisors. I think we're, we're close to being on the same page. It's a big project as, as Mr. Dawson has noted, there's 3,200 acres or so in this sub area. subarea of four part of GWAP. And we recovered about 2,600 acres of it. And, you know, conceptually, uh, when you put together a planning commission, I mean, a, a comprehensive plan, um, you know, it, it is what we envision this area to be. And it, and it all, and sometimes it works, you know, pretty specifically, sometimes it doesn't. Uh, but I think that we're pretty close. I think that we, we can find middle ground on this and we're very excited to have the opportunity to actually have discussions with the planning commission, with the Board of Supervisors. Uh, we had a community meeting back in June, uh, you know, we had submitted our application prior to that back in March or April. And, you know, we've been kind of waiting for input, so this has been very helpful to us. So.
Just, I'm going to tell you, state your name and your affiliation.
Yes, my name is Charlie Payne. I live law firm, Herschel Fletcher, and I represent the applicant here, so.
Okay. But we'll just have that for record.
Yes, sir. My address, uh, my address, we're, we're in downtown Farnsworth, 725 Jackson Street.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. So just real quick, the first slide is just our master plan. As you can see, uh, from our master plan, it's in the subarea four of your comprehensive plan or under the GWAP, uh, segment of the comprehensive plan. It basically spans the county line north of Route Three, you know, past the Bush office is pretty much the, the area. Uh, you can see that along Route Three, we have our town center area, uh, we have our mixed use area, a little bit further west of the town center area, see that we have our light industrial, our corporate campus area, if you will. Uh, we've got mixed in assisted living, six different types of residential housing. Uh, I heard Supervisor Johnson, the board talk about what types of housing, workforce affordable housing will be on the site. You'll have everything from town homes to multifamily, uh, to single family, to estate homes, uh, to assisted living, uh, units as well. So this is sort of the game plan. You'll see also our road network, you'll see that Gold Mine Parkway is internal, uh, off of Route Three. You'll also see our road connection going, uh, through the project, only through the town center, but also north of the site into our residential, uh, areas. Uh, we have heard comments about more interconnectivity amongst the, uh, residential development portions of the project to the north. If many of you are familiar with the site, if you will walk the site, I'm sure Mr. Dodson will be happy to take you. Here's lots of topography and environmental sense of areas on the site, there are streams and wetlands and, and topo, uh, challenges. So what you're seeing here is a reflection of that, not to encroach into those areas, but we're certainly open to more discussions. And you'll see in the slide up here, the pedestrian mobility within the project. Uh, you'll see lots of trail, lateral connectivity, not only the town center, but also throughout the entire project. Uh, so this is the phasing of document that we recently provided staff. Uh, this is something that we've been working on and you'll see that the outlook on this is 40 years. Uh, this is again, it's a big project and we've talked about the number of units being about 4,750, we'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, in the slide. Uh, but this is what we're thinking. So on the commercial discussions, uh, we're thinking this is the red area that you'll see here. Get my key sheet here. So you'll see along Route Three that we're anticipating, not anticipating, again, this is where our anticipated phase. The challenge on a project of this size, um, and of this, this type of structure is, you know, what's the market going to bear? You've had so many shakeups in the market because of COVID-19, as you were prior to COVID-19, big box retail was struggling because of the, the growth of online, uh, retail development. So, and that hasn't stopped, that's, that has just, you know, just gone through the boon, if you will, uh, since COVID-19. So there are those challenges. Um, you know, uh, big industrial is sort of out now. It's more white flex, with office mix and assembly to small manufacturing, that's sort of the market that you're seeing, uh, for those type of, healthcare, healthcare area is just growing and expanding, uh, in all kinds of different places and different avenues. Um, so what you're seeing is a reflection of how we're anticipating the market, uh, moving forward. Uh, we also submitted our application, if you get a chance to look at it, is a 10-year fiscal outlook, and we also provided a 30-year fiscal outlook. The first 10 years, we're anticipating about a 6.6 million positive net return to the county, and then over the 30 years, you're looking at about 73 million. Uh, so I mean, again, uh, tough to look at 30, a little bit easier to look at 10. Uh, so we, we made that pretty clear in our analysis. But you'll see, we do initially anticipate, especially along Route Three, seeing more commercial investment, more commercial development. And then you'll see as it goes from red to brown, we're mixing in now some more, we're mixing in some rooftops to help create that synergy, that town center synergy. And then you'll see as we get those rooftops synergized on the site, we start moving into the larger part of the development and into more of the single family detached. So you'll see towards, closer towards Route Three, closer towards the town center, you're going to see multifamily, you're going to see town homes, and you're going to see commercial retail, uh, restaurants, et cetera, uh, that will be part of the project. So that's, that's just a quick snapshot of what our, our phasing is anticipating. Transportation is a big issue, we understand that. We're trying to tackle it, we're trying to get, uh, as much feedback as we possibly can. Uh, we agree, we've got our, obviously have our transportation engineer on line as well. We, we, we are anticipating one additional signal, traffic signal, obviously if it warrants, we have bill control over that, that's all about VDOT. And we're anticipating access points off of Route Three. It could be three, it could be four, it could be more. Um, we certainly have heard from both the board and from the planning commission, I can't confirm if I had too many of those. And then the timing, and then the view shed, the view shed from Route Three, what does that look like? How far back is buffering? Is it consistent with the GWAP? I think what we're getting, we're, we're looking at and what we're attempting to balance there is the viability of attracting, of, of attracting commercial investment to our site and what they're going to be demanding for visibility and obviously what the county's going to be designed for, for visibility. So we want to work with you on that and, you know, how that plays out. Timing of Gold Mine Parkway, other internal roads, infrastructure improvements, uh, there's a possibility for community development for you, where we could perhaps finance some of this infrastructure, especially, uh, Gold Mine Parkway sooner rather than later. Uh, we included that in our draft proffers. And just real quickly on the proffers, it's a draft, it's a work in progress. It, it was being submitted without any, you know, without input from per se from the county. This was something we wanted to start with, to start the conversation, so it's not the end, it's just the beginning. And then, you know, Route 20 and Route Three intersection improvements, we'll go a lot about that, and VDOT's planning, and then timing, as we move along, you heard Mr. Johnson talk about, maybe coming back, updating on traffic studies as the project evolves, see what that looks like. Here's our transportation plan, real quick, you'll see, uh, Gold Mine Parkway internal, which is the big red line that runs parallel to Route Three, and then the other collector roads within the development. I'm running out of time, Mr. Brooks, I'm going to be pretty quick. Uh, and this right here just goes to the buffering question and where we're anticipating the commercial development desire to be. We can certainly talk about, you know, how we can improve visibility, view sheds, landscaping of, and how the introduction of the commercial works. But we're trying to balance that with what our users, events that we don't want and desire and require in order to be there. So we're, we're, we're looking at that as well and we're, again, we very much want to work with you on that process. Uh, here again is the, the buffer, uh, view, this is what's in your GWAP today. And what we did is overlay it on where we're proposing the uses to be. Design standards, uh, and utilities, again, we, we, we did submit a design manual with our project and we did proffer it, and there's a lot of detail on that, Zach is on it as well, and he can give you, uh, some color, more color to that, but there's lots of detail on the design standards, uh, that we did submit. It's about this date, I think you have a copy of it. RSA, Kenny's been working with RSA pretty much on a consistent basis, uh, they're very good to work with, I think they understand what our capacity needs are going to be, it's going to be timing questions, where are you going to need it, what are you going to proceed forward, how is the project going to evolve? Phasing and allocation, again, uh, these are things that we have heard from you and heard from the board, type of residential uses, how we allocate those, timing and phasing. Right now, we've got program with about 4,750 residential units, and that's a mix multifamily, single family detached apartments, plus, uh, assisted living. So that comes out to about 400, and, and, I'm sorry, and age restricted. So you'll see our breakdown for single family detached is about 43% is what we've got program. Single family detached, attached, I'm sorry, it should be about 27% of your towns. Uh, and it'll be, there'll be different types of towns, different types of width, different types of product. Uh, you've got multifamily, which we're anticipating about 20%. Active adult, we're looking at probably 10%, and that would likely be either multifamily or the villa type layout. And we will have assisted living as well. Commercial uses, light flex industrial, uh, discussions about corporate campus, we're programming about 600,000 square feet of commercial overall, uh, that's part of our fiscal impact analysis, uh, as we did submit our application. Uh, town center focused with a big anchor user, a big anchor retail user, whether it's a grocer or some sort of, uh, Home Depot type use or other use. And again, we're also looking to attract this light, uh, flex industrial. Co-working space, teleworking space, public use type of facilities are also very attractive. They're also very attractive to attracting a younger demographic to your county, uh, highly skilled technology arena, et cetera. The project also will promote market employment in office users, we believe, and then hotel and motels are something we think is possible on the site, which is consistent with your GWAP and promoting tourism. Timing is key to how this is marketed for them. Schools and public safety, we are currently evaluating the impacts to those schools and public safety, so we've retained a consultant to assist us with that. Our plan is to dedicate land on the site for a new school. Uh, our plan is also to dedicate on this site, uh, an area for a public, uh, safety facility, uh, in a park. And that's in our proffers right now, the question is timing and location, I know, and we can have that discussion, uh, as we move forward. Open space, environmental, uh, concerns has also been raised with us, you know, this, this is going to be close to 50% open space, um, and we're going to be protecting weapons in extreme areas, and we're going to be mitigating, uh, any impacts as well and avoiding, uh, so-called mining areas. And, uh, Zach put this together recently in response to, what do your trails look like, what do your open space looks like? And I think it's a very good slide to describe that. Schoolware management, we got a question about, uh, uh, I think during the ARC comments about schoolware management, how much have we designed it to this point? As you probably all know, the schoolware management process is part of the site plan process as you move forward. At this stage, we're looking at general locations, but the design of that, uh, happens before you develop, obviously put a shovel in the ground, but at the site plan stage, of course, you've got to follow state and county requirements for that process. Fiscal impact and taxes, uh, again, I, just as I noted earlier, our 30-year plan projects a 73 million net positive, uh, return to the county. There's also, my understanding, the discussion about tax assessments, when that's to occur via land use designation, and how do we increase HUD government-backed residential loans in the area? Uh, that's something we want to work with you and also with our users, especially, uh, on that site. And that's it. And I'm, again, have to answer your questions, we've got our whole team here, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Charlie, will you please back it up one slide, just did look backwards one?
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, Commissioners, um, questions leading to accounting and/or the advocate? Start with District One, go on to District Two, come in to District Three, Four and Five, in that order, please.
Yeah, I don't have any specific questions, I have some comments.
Go ahead.
Would like me to do comments now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, so from the 30,000 foot level, um, since you presented 30,000 foot, um, I've, I've looked at the bullets, I've watched the video, I've gone through all your material. Just to give you a little background on me, I'm fairly familiar with construction, um, I know that things can be done well, I've been involved with projects that have won design awards. So what I'm saying comes with a little bit of experience. Mr. Dodson, known you for a number of years, I'm not questioning your commitment in Orange County at all, all right? So, but I, I don't have to go through more than three pages of this to like get at the heart of my issue, my personal issue. So got Barbersville Vineyards, well, this is your golf course, right? Got Rapidan, right? I go to the second page, I got more District One stuff, Lordensville, so on and so forth, great photos. And here's what's in the middle. This, this is, this isn't hot, this doesn't match, right? Like, so to me, this is just your standard Loudoun County, Fairfax County, Fredericksburg style development. I don't see any flair here, I don't see anything that nods to Orange County. And, and then this is the commercial piece, so this is the piece that's on Route Three. This is like, I assume this is your big box anchor. So I'm, I'm not impressed at all with this. And, and I know you can do a lot better. I mean, this is, I mean, seriously, I mean, I've said many times here that, you know, developers should bring their A-game. So I don't think this is an A-game at all. And I've said many times here that I'm not anti-development, what I'm in favor of is good development, quality development. And I want 50 years from now, the people who come here, when they cross the county line, they actually know they're somewhere different. What you've presented, in my opinion, is just extending all the nonsense from Northern Virginia into Orange. So that's one high-level comment, I'm not at all impressed. And actually, I'm a little offended because some of these things, for 25 years of, of my life fighting for to retain, like the vineyards, like the tourism, like all the things going on now, I've been talking about this for years and some of you know my history here in the county and what I fought for. So to use these as advertisements for this, I find it a little offensive and I know you all can do better. I've seen better and I know you can do better. So that's one 30,000 foot comment. The other 30,000 foot comment, I'll, I'll not be long, Mr. Brooks, I promise you, is this fiscal analysis. Like this development that's basically some commercial along Route Three with 4,000 homes behind it, there's no evidence anywhere that that's going to be a positive impact financially to the county. Every piece of evidence across the state and everywhere says that that's going to be a negative financial impact. And you're not offering really anything. You're offering a school site, but I mean, you just said you bought it in 1907, right? So what was it, 3,000 an acre or something that then? So you're offering a $75,000, you know, piece of land. I went to Loudoun County, which, um, you know, I noticed K3 is actually, uh, addressed in Loudoun County in Middleburg, and I know you're using your address for this, Kenny. But this is their CIF plan. Okay, so this has, you know, what they believe the infrastructure cost per home. Now, I'm not going to focus on this because I know their infrastructure is higher than ours. What I'm going to focus on is these number of children per units, right? You said yourself that you're going to have younger demographics here, and your fiscal analysis took the current Orange County population, which is not the younger demographic, and divided that out and came up with, I think, a .37 child per household. I mean, that is, that's absurd. That's absolutely absurd. Again, it's, it's like, I find it a little offensive. I've gone through the, the Loudoun County numbers, 1.07 child per single family, .69 children per attached single family, .49 for stacked multifamily. Okay, if I use those numbers, you're $114 million to the negative on this development. So those are my high-level comments, like, I heard Mr. Crozier say that, you know, we threw the developer under the bus when, when we, and I was like, you gotta be kidding me. Like you, no offense, I mean, I'm not trying to be offensive, but you, you've proposed a Loudoun County development, you've not presented a fiscal impact analysis that's anywhere near reality. So I don't feel like we're throwing you under the bus. I, I mean, I, I just can't believe this is after six months, 15 years of work, that this is, this is what's being proposed. All these details, hey, we can talk about that. To me, there's some big fundamental things that are issued, it's the overall design, it's the fiscal impact, that's all the comments that I have, Mr. Brooks.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate it. And I, I think, just one, pulling a segment of our proposal out and saying this is for the project, this one B is a little bit unfair. It has so many different segments, so many different aspects to this project. It has got, you know, not only commercial town center components to it, not only does it have corporate it have corporate components to it, it's also got residential and living components to it. I didn't say one demographic would be here. There are many, many demographics here at this location. What I was saying is you want to attract a younger generation, the demographic, employer, employee, or how do you do that? All the jurisdictions are trying to figure that out. Loudoun doesn't have a hard time doing that at all because of their location. The challenge here is going to be is attracting that market. I think we can do it. We can do it with a reasonable plan, and we do it with a reasonable process. But to compare us to Loudoun County, I think that's, I think that's unfair.
I think you can do it too, but I'm not going to approve something that's doing it on the backs of the taxpayers of Orange County. And that's what you're proposing. Is this going to be like a rebuttal thing? Because that's, I just wanted comments. Like, I don't want to get in a debate with you over this. You're determined, you're skilled at this. I'm just telling you what I see, okay? Like, .37 kids per household, is that really? You think that's reasonable? I don't think so. And your whole project hinges on that. Because if you use different numbers, it's not a financial gain for the county.
Well, just so you know, we, our evaluation is based on what the generation of student-age kids are in Orange County. That's how you evaluate impacts. You don't evaluate what's happening in Loudoun County or Richmond. You evaluate what's happening in Orange County today. So if we brought in a residential development, how many school-aged kids would be generated from a single-family detached unit or an attachment or a multifamily? We're looking at that. We don't have those numbers yet. What you're seeing is a projection based on sort of a larger assumption. When we were asked to take a deeper dive into it, that's what we're doing right now. So we're analyzing that. But you don't look at other jurisdictions to determine what your cost impact is going to be. You look at what is happening in Orange County today and what we projected to happen going forward.
All right, so we're going to move on.
Can I address this question? Because I know I have my time, but I want to stay on this thread because I think it's very central to the discussion.
Go ahead, go ahead.
But what, what you're proposing, I understand you're saying, well, we're, you know, we're really looking at Orange County, what's going to happen in Orange County is going to happen continuously. But that's just not what you're proposing. You're saying we're going to make Orange County better. And so you can't take the baseline of what is here because it's not applicable to this development. And I totally agree. I don't, I don't agree with that. If we want to talk about the kids, we want more kids here. Like, we're, like, we're, if you're proposing a development that's just the same as where we are, that's just not realistic. Because even what you said is you're trying to attract a different sort of demographic into this area. And so by virtue of that, if we want to settle for what we're doing in Orange County, we can settle for that. And that's not what I think the proposal was presented. So we can't sort of have both sides of that coin showing on the upside. It's, it's not that, it's, it's different. And so I think as we look at this issue, the issue is it goes directly to the cost, either the positive, you know, benefit or the negative benefit, right? We can argue about those numbers, but I think it's reasonable to say that if we're just going to say we're going to keep Orange County exactly the same, that's not what you propose here.
That's not what I'm saying, though. What I'm saying is we look, that's exactly what we look at, is cost. What is it going to cost if we generate 100 kids or 1,000 kids or 5,000 kids? What's it going to cost to your county? And it doesn't happen all at one time, it happens over a period of time. So you add inflation, the CPI, and, you know, what? But at the same time, what are we generating from a tax revenue perspective? You know, are those homes generating enough revenue to pay for themselves? Is the commercial that's being invested generating enough revenue to pay commercial taxes to offset that impact? How is all of that collectively netting out? And that's what you see in a fiscal impact analysis. That's, that's, you're exactly right.
So help to facilitate this. Let me see if I can do it this way. You understand their concerns.
Correct.
Their concerns then have to be answered differently from what you have proposed. I'm not saying your, your, your qualifying data may be correct, their qualifying thoughts may be correct. You haven't brought to them what they feel is the right equation to get the right answer, okay? So I would suggest, just to try to close this in so we can go with that, okay? If the Ford didn't do it, I'm talking terms where I'm at, and I'm going to try the dots. If the dots didn't do it, I'm trying to find something that makes them understand that you've actually used good qualifying data. That's what they're saying. And what I'm hearing from them is the data you put before doesn't qualify for what's there. It may or may not. I'm not saying it does or does not. That's not what they're seeing. So in order for me to move on, that's, that's what I would say to you. Okay, find the data to substantiate your point a little bit better than you have. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. And I will say this, we're using data based on what we know the costs are to Orange County today and moving forward. We also are basing on what your tax rate is and what we anticipate the value of those improvements will be. That's how I can do this.
Okay, then try it this way. Put that in writing with actual factual information, where you got it from, those supporting documents, and let them extrapolate that further. You, you, if you use this, 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 just like he was able to pull up, I'm not saying he did right or wrong, he was able to pull up Loudoun and say, this is what Loudoun has determined, and we need a determination for Orange. Because I agree with you, we can't compare it to Loudoun. He's just saying this is a Rubik that they typically use, we should have one too, and that will tell us kind of what you're thinking, all right?
Absolutely.
So now we're going to move on to Mr. Nancy in District Two, and then we'll come back to some of that. Because we could stay on one point all day long.
No, all right, no, I'm good with that.
Listen, you go forward. And I said it all, I said I was going to handle this and cut it off, so I don't want you to feel rude, Advocate, and I don't want the county to feel that way. But we could sit here all night and want, so we'll move it forward a little bit.
Okay. Well, the first thing I want to do is make a disclosure. In my previous life, I'm used at your law firm for some business. But regardless of that, I sat for hours and hours in G-WEP meetings putting that plan together, seeing what was originally presented, which is extremely disappointing to me personally. Because this is not a rendering of what that plan calls for. Your comment about the buffering on Route Three being an inhibitor in terms of the commercial development. I'm real familiar with Williamsburg because I went to school there. Newtown was not there in 1970 when I left. Richmond Road is the primary connector in going into Williamsburg. You have to look real hard to find Newtown. But it's been found and is considered probably one of the better commercial combined, commercial residential development around. It can be done, as Mr. Capel said, if you want to. And it's current concept, and I'm pro-business as a known banker for 37 years. This is not acceptable, and I could not recommend it in good faith to the next level on the Board of Supervisors. I challenge you all to go back to the drawing board because you've got a tight timeline here to finish this, to be in compliance with the county's regulations and requirements. You need to do this in a way that is realistic. It has to be specific, it has to be guided. I understand markets change, things change. One thing I've learned in 37 years is never said never. So, you know, from your standpoint, I understand where you're coming from, that market conditions dictate. But as somebody alluded to earlier, we realize that. And we should have the ability as an entity to come back to you and say, we concur, and we will modify this, or we will work with you to make sure it's a work of proposition. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I.
Thank you, Mr. Yansky, and I appreciate your comments. I, we are, we want to get to, we want to work with you, we want to get to a point where you're comfortable with the project. Like I said, this is really just sort of our first shot out of getting input and where we are. When I was talking about being an inhibitor, and it wasn't intended to say it was an inhibitor, I mean, the plan is fantastic, I got to have a user or users that are okay with having a buffer of 300-plus feet back into a development to attract consumers. How does that impact them? How does that work? It, I wish it was that easy. I wish we could say, oh, that's not a problem, we should develop it that way. I want this project to be successful, I know you want it to be successful. We want to find a way to do it, we're going to work together to make that happen.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to probably change the tone just a little bit. I got to make a disclaimer also. I chair the board of deacons at the church that does properties around, so I'm a little bit invested in it. So I want to make sure that's buffered properly, I want to make sure that access is not restricted, I want to make sure that cemetery area is less so that we can go down. This, throw this a little bit in it, we have been talking with Mr. Goodwin and others about getting just a little bit more space so we could do some things to revitalize that church. So I'll say that and I'll stop on that point. But I will go to this point. Here's what I think you should do. This is what I think. I think whatever you phase it into, it should be reviewed by the county, and you can come back to the county every seven years or something. They say seven is the perfect number. I think every seven years you should come back and say, listen, this is where we are, this is where we're going, and here we go. That keeps everybody in control and in check. And I think that gives you enough time to do something, to see what something is doing. The other thing that, that I think, I think Goldmine Parkway should be established early on in Phase One, and if at all possible, connect to Route 20 somehow. So go right by that 711 down to Goldmine Parkway and start connecting that early on in Phase One. So the reason I say I want to change the project a little bit because I truly believe you're going to fill the blanks in for all the answers with all the answers we have of these questions, and G-WAP is going to guide us, and the county is going to make sure a lot of these things are done. But from my perspective, if you start Goldmine Parkway and you have it in existence, that allows you construction route, it takes construction off of Route Three when we're trying to build this. It also shows your favorableness to remove the transportation obstructions that may will come on Route Three, because they're coming. And so if we can move, we can get this Parkway built, which is going to be your main thoroughfare. And I'm not saying your first, and I'm not telling you how to build it, your engineer's here, so he can tell you how to build it. But I'm telling you, your first look for me could just be a gravel road where they go up and down and see what's going on, but get them off of Route Three as soon as possible, connect them to Route 20 as much as possible. And I think that would eliminate the extra turn-ins and turn-offs of Route Threes that's necessary. For example, the way I see this, the post office is there, you could eliminate the interest on the post office on Route Three if Goldmine is connected properly, because it would, it would allow them to come down Goldmine, go to the post office instead of going, trying to cross over Route Three. They could go from Lakewoods over to Goldmine, or go down Route 20 over to Goldmine. Your main thoroughfare will get in there. I am going to pick up a point, because I've said this before and I'm going to stick with it, I've heard it in political forums, I've listened to enough school boards. I'd like to see you put about 50 acres for a school back there. I'm not the person that says we're not going to have a second high school. But I think we're going to have 50 acres back there for a school. You cannot put a high school on anything less than 30, 35 acres, which has got to have too many fields. Unless, that's my second point, you take some of these parks and things and attach them to the school site, then one can serve all. I'm looking here at four baseball, softball diamonds or something I saw in here, and I'm looking at, it looked like to me, three football fields off to the side. I'm assuming what y'all are going to do is what Williamsburg did down there, again, take Williamsburg, I went down and went, my son took camping, they got an entourage. But I will say this, you have to go way off the beaten path to get to that park, which I agree with what you've done here. You're from Frenchburg, you should be familiar with this. My grandson plays in a little flag football league, and he goes to Frenchburg Fieldhouse. And to get to the Frenchburg Fieldhouse, you really got to turn off of Route Two, I call it, and go a half a mile. If you don't know where you're going, you're thinking, I'm going the wrong place. But when you get back there, you realize, I know why they did this. This makes sense to me. So when 150, 300 people coming back, by the time they all get back to Route Two, the traffic has dissipated. It didn't make any sense to me until I actually did it, then I could feel it. So the school site and the park site ought to be joined, and they should be, they should be early on in your phasing. And I'm, this is just, I'm going to take a 50,000-foot bird's eye view at it. Then there's a buy-in from the county as well as the citizen in that area that you are trying to do the right thing. Not saying you're not trying to do the right thing. You follow with me here? But if you connect those two parks and the school together, you don't have to have both, really. They can be one of the same. That's the buy-in that I see. All right, let's talk about the school cost here. This is $73 million, how did y'all? I don't get that $73 million, maybe that my numbers are not right. So if I get 4,000 homes, how many kids do you suspect I'm going to generate? Out of all the 4,000 homes, don't worry about the breakdown, just tell me the grand number.
Well, typically, you generate, so 43% of our development is going to be single-family detached. Typically, a single-family detached, the jurisdictions I work in, you're generating almost one kid per house on average, on average. That's across the board on average. And again, typically, what you look at when you do an analysis, you look across the county, and what across the county is the.
So just give me the number. I'm not, you don't have to tell me how you got it, just give me the number.
Just, I would say probably 1,500 or so, round or about.
That's what I wanted you to say. I did about 2,200. It takes about 1,500 to 2,000 to qualify for a high school. Don't care if it's a primary school put there, eventually kids can grow up and get to a high school level. So you, you need to plan that spot. I'm just using the own data to extrapolate that out. Now, this is not a swipe at anything, this is just a comment. The Lakewoods was built to be a retirement community. It was never built to be what it is today, and was never told to Orange, and I've done some research on this, to be what it is today. So let me take you way back. That was a black settlement called Cattail. That's what the Lakewoods was. My family sold part of their land, that's how Lakewoods came into existence. Cattail, Flat Run, and Black Meadows were all African-American settlements. The reason they sold the land so cheap to Lakewoods because they didn't think they could build on it because of, that's how they got the lake bad. I've done my homework on this. But if you take the Lakewoods thing, what happened in 68, or 66 and 68 to where it is in 2021? If this happens to this project here, you know how many bus loads we bust out of Lakewoods every day, you know how many kids drive to school from Lakewood, you know how many interests we have in Lakewood? So this would be a Lakewoods percent, agree with me?
It would be similar size.
Similar size. And at this point, 45 years later, this is a 50-year plan, the biggest bulk of what we get far as concentrated populations is right in this area. You build it, they will come. The town center looks like, as Mr. Johnson said, the Middle East, like 36 acres. That property needs to be about 50, 60 acres. I only did the 36 acres based on the plot. If you look at the plot on Loudoun there, you just go there. So to recap and ask you if you. And so to recap and ask you if you would consider, consider what's the impact it's going to be on the school system? Consider connecting Route 20 and getting Goldmine done in your first phasing. And consider connecting your school site and your park site all together. I think I would have labeled a whole lot of what am I going to do with there? And just kind of give that to the county, a consideration. I'm going to tell you what the proffer, I'm just saying, okay, Parks and Rec in the elevator, when I came down, said that we are raising money for a dog park. I see you got a dog park as an example in here. It seems like to me, if you would, if it be a joint private partnership, we could probably get so these things done. I'm done. Julie, go ahead.
That's hard to follow that.
I'm sorry.
But yeah, I just had a question. When we were meeting last time, they were talking about the phasing. Did you have any more additional information on the phasing for the drought properties? Could you fill some of that?
So we've got, we have put together what we think the phasing will be. It's this slide right here, the phasing plan. Now, this is straight up, you know, this is something we wanted to present to planning commission and RAS board. What we're set is to have some more discussion on this. We're looking at this project being 30, 40 years. So talking about Lake of the Woods and what it is today, we're looking at a long build element, which a lot of times what happens with big projects is just, it's just a natural human reaction. Oh, my gosh, we're going to have 2,000 schoolable kids tomorrow. It's going to, the growth of this project is going to take time. We need to build synergy at the site so we can attract marketability and investment. That's going to be the key to success there. So we think there's going to be some commercial that initiates along the Route Three corridor. And then you start seeing attraction to the town center, then you start seeing attraction, you know, maybe multi-family, maybe towns, and then you start working your way back to state homes and to the residential. So it's an evolution, if you will. But if we propose phasing, we're going to want some flexibility, right? So maybe what happens in the market is the corporate canvas picks up. So I'm sure no one's going, oh, we got to wait till Phase Two for that to happen. No, no, that's going to go forward. Or we might, you know, attract multi-family right away. So if we, you know, we're looking at phasing and proffering it, it's going to have to have some flexibility. It's just a natural thing to ask for, just because markets change. Who would have thought the past two years would be dealing with this COVID crisis? It has completely changed the market.
I don't want to interrupt you, and I really shouldn't, but I gave you all of the grants. I told you seven years.
I'm sorry.
I told you seven years to come and look at it to see what's going on about it early. I'm not trying to lead you here, but I'm trying to guide you. I don't want to drive you.
I think that's a very good point. The only sort of hesitation I would add is...
I'm not asking you to commit. I'm just asking, see, I asked you about phasing.
We got a user or an investor that wants to get in that town center site, and he goes, oh, gosh, we got to go back and get approvals again? I thought we had this in place.
No, I don't think you have to go back and get approvals. I'm just saying that we'll all come back to the table in seven years, because I don't want to go over this, take yours apart. But all I'm saying is that if you, if we approved a high school right now, it would be five years for it to be in existence. You understand what I'm saying? So some of this, I know we're 10 years down the road on. You follow me? I'm not, I'm not saying do it now. I'm just saying that the intent structures are going to be...
Mr. Brooks, if I'm, if I'm Mr. Chair, if I'm a, are you suggesting a reporting interim as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's why we got Josh here. He understands the real words for it.
Can you go into more detail on to your phasing then?
So the red is commercial. Let me give a color quick there. So the red's commercial, reddish color, as you say. Sure, the town brown is quasi-commercial, so you've got some mix going on there. Green is institutional, schools, parks, public safety, and then residential is the blue. So as you see it phase, and then you see it also via land days that we've got kind of laid out. And this is in our general development plan as well. So for example, in the first phase, let's say, we see Reschmont Retail, about 13,500 per feet is what we'd be anticipating. You might get a pharmacy, CVS, and some other commercials. So at the end of Phase One, you're probably looking at about close to 7,000 square feet or more. I'm sorry, you'd be looking at about, let's see, that number's about, I'm just adding it up here, 35,000, 36,000 square feet of commercial at that point.
How many years is Phase One?
Let me just think. Phase One, 20, it's on that other slide. If you go back that slide.
For me, it's about 10 blocks or...
They're, 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 so there's about 40 years laid out here, so we've got six blocks, about seven or eight years per feet.
And then the other thing that was in discussion before was the water reservoirs?
Yes.
And I didn't, I didn't think that that was discussed today?
We hadn't planned for them, but we've left area available for them.
Okay.
The planning for that takes a very long time, lots of programming, lots of design work. Just not, would be just us involved in that would be very...
So let me help you. At the board meeting, they discuss reservoirs, and they will not be needing. The new way that RSA can have the water come out the rapidane will give them far more water than they would ever need to facilitate. There was some discussion that they needed, but they said that RSA has guaranteed the county. Is that not right, Josh?
Is that based off of housing or what potential types of jobs or industrials could come through?
Well, that's a great question. I mean, obviously residential water use is different than industrial water usage. And so, but it's, it's based on the uses that are projected in the command and wellness area plan, which generally match up to the mix of uses that are proposed in concept with this. Although with the flexibility that's, that's built into the way the plan is drawn, this plan is drawn now, it is harder to pin some of that down. If a commercial, I mean, if an industrial user were to come into being, they might be a larger water user.
They truly believe that there's plenty of water there at the present, because I questioned one of the wardmen was intensely after that, and he said, yes.
Mike, you're, I was just curious if you were looking at the outside, like, what would be the maximum? Like, if it was like a data center or something like that, or some...
Well, they said the only water impound reservoir they could have there would probably last them 40, the 45 days would be the biggest they could build or hold. And if we were in that type of drought, it would be more than that, that, that. So we usually go through about a 10-day drought, and that's in, RSA said they could handle it.
But that's, oh, let me just clarify. That's predicated on a new permit being approved at a much higher level than is currently being taken out of the rapidane. So that is not done. That is projected.
So talk to me.
Walk into this and say, yes, RSA says we can get 5 million gallons of water out of the rapidane, and that will satisfy this development as currently planned.
Right.
Now, I, just since we're on this, on this issue, I brought this up at the last time because it wasn't consistent with the GWOP. It wasn't, you know, it just wasn't, so I'm asking questions about it. But there will be no reservoir built after homes are built. So that will never happen. And I'm telling you right now, if we think there's going to be a reservoir or an impoundment of some sort, after there's a bunch of homes in there, do you want to be on the planning commission or the board of supervisors when that comes to you? No, that'll never happen. So, so I think we have to go into this with the kind of information, which RSA is saying we're going to go for a permit at a higher level than what we're getting now, and that could serve this development as currently planned. But if we think that, oh, well, we'll just build that, you know, 25 years from now, that's not going to happen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's the thought to build it 25,000 years from now. I think there is a thought that if, when we come back and regroup in seven, 10, whatever years, we think if we say, okay, RSA's not going to be supplying the water, that's going to be a trick to trigger us to say, okay, no more. And I think they would agree to that, because they don't want to have to order still. They, they're not, nobody's going to want to build there too. So I'm not in disagreement with you, but I just think I've got to listen to what RSA says. They were the ones that said we had to have water. Now they're the ones that say, oh, no, we don't have to if we do this.
But they said we need to have water. I think they did say that for the total development of the entire GWOP. They didn't say it had to be in these two places, is what I've learned since. They said there needs to be water somewhere, and I think what the board of supervisors and RSA are saying is we're not going to plan for here. It's going, it's going to need to be somewhere. I just want everybody to understand, if we don't do it here as part of this plan, it'll never happen. You can't come in later and go, we're just going to build a reservoir now. What do you think the people who, who built in this area without that on the books would say? They would say, no way. I mean, you're not going to do it, so.
Well, maybe that is a bullet point. I would say, let's make that as a bullet point, Josh, and get some clarity in that, because that, they beat us pretty heavy at the board meeting, and, and talking to Mr. Frame and Mr. White afterwards, they said that, oh, no, we don't need it, because it was, we have to.
One, one comment. They don't need it for this.
Right.
All right, but the GWAP is an integrated visionary plan, and so the question isn't really, do we need it for just this? The question is, do we need it for the GWAP as it's...
That's what I'm saying. Let's, uh...
And what I'm saying is...
Let's ask, let's ask RSA for the GWAP area, because if this is what affected, this would become their existence, it wouldn't... We're going a little bit away from you now.
And Mr. Chairman, if not here, then where?
That's right, that's right.
You know, because if there's nowhere else to put one.
That's right, that's right. Hold on, hold on just a second. Yes, sir.
Brian, Brian's got a good point. What I think he is saying, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, there is no reason why a contingency plan for water impoundments shouldn't be included in the plan, number one.
What plan? This plan or...?
This plan. It can be used as a recreational type of thing. You go to Newport Hughes, interstate goes right across the M reservoir.
Well, I'm not exactly saying that.
I'm not saying the interstate. I'm just saying that contingency-wise, your point of, you know, once the houses are built,
Correct. That's my point. My point, my point is if you don't plan it, it'll never happen, which is almost obvious on its face. But what I'm also saying is that, and Supervisor Frame has been very clear, because he's a board member, and he informed me on this matter, that, that there is an application that'll be forthcoming to address water issues that exist that, that will serve this area for the near term, for the, you know, to raise the amount of water that we can take out of the rapidane. It doesn't say that in 50 years, we won't need a reservoir somewhere, but I think the board, I believe the guidance from the board, and what I, is that we don't need to put it here. I think they concede at that point. Now, we could talk to the board in our work session about that and say, is that the way we ought to go, or is it something like what you're saying, Mr. Yansky? But I just want everybody to be clear, if we don't put it in here, it's not going to happen. But it's not a magic, so.
So when you say in here, you're talking about in GWAP, or you're talking about...
I'm just talking about in this development.
And Brian, you're talking, I see the civil engineer here.
I'm itching.
We're not talking about, is it physically possible? We're talking about, is it politically possible?
True.
So can you go and get the political body to effectively, it's going to end up being some sort of adverse possession, take that land for a reservoir? Likely not. That's, that's, I'm just, I...
So, so hold on one second. Hold, hold, hold on a second. Hold, 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 hold on. Is it something you just dine and say, say it?
I appreciate it.
Sorry, Mr. Penny.
Keith Oster, Solomon Donahue, Ingalls Principal, Seven...
All right, slow down a little bit, start again.
I'm Keith Luke Oster.
Okay.
I'm with Solomon Donahue Ingalls. I'm running for one zero seven two zero fundee draw.
You had a card?
I did.
Give it to Tracy, because she was not catching, she was asleep.
The accommodation for the reservoir is physically, is physically there. Right now, we have the existing topography. We have the highest feasible elevation for an embankment that we've programmed in. We actually have two separate ones, one that is wholly contained on the property, and one just in case Orange County, the state, happen to collaborate and have a regional facility that impounded yet more water and went beyond that 45-day threshold. It is considerably more water with the collaborative effort. That one does go into private property. The one that is exclusively on this, on this project would not impact any lots. It would be in presumably HOA land, common area, and it would not be on a property owner's property. There would be adverse possession issues or anything like that. I'm not trying to oversimplify it, but I just want to be clear, it can happen. There's not this giant...
No, let me clarify. Of course it can happen. We know it can happen. We know the topography's there. We know the GWAP plan for it. That is not the point I'm making. The point is, you can do anything you want. The point is, will this, will the neighbors here, will the citizens who live here allow that to happen after all their homes are built? And what I'm saying is, there is no way unless you plan it in advance and they have knowledge that we're going to put a reservoir in here, you're going to buy this property, and there are going to be bulldozers coming in while your kids are playing in the backyard. That's just not going to happen. We need to sort of realize that that's not going to happen politically.
All right, I got it, I got it. They got it. He's got it. We've got to move on, because if I don't, we're just, we're going to just stay down that rapid hole. Keep, keep going. I'm sorry.
With the, since the transportation people are on the, in the meeting too, can they speak to the, I guess, the traffic and the access points on Route Three?
Sure. Stephen, do you want to just quickly go over the analysis for potential access points along Route Three? And I assume you want to hear about perhaps the signal that maybe at the post office in Route Three.
Tell them a little quickly with those two.
Just real quick, Stephen, just to get a quick overview.
Okay, my name, for the record, my name is Stephen Dowdman. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. My name is Stephen Dowdman. I'm with Rose Lake Associates. When we did the traffic study, we originally started off with seven access points, and with coordination with VDOT and the county, that has been reduced. Right now, we are proposing one ultimate signal at post office. There are going to be some temporary signals that we're looking at. Essentially, those will serve as interim conditions until the realignment of Route 20 by VDOT. The other access points that we're proposing are either existing or proposed as partial movement accesses, essentially right-in, right-outs, or right-in, right-out, and left-ins.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
So you, I think if you keep your head still, not, not telling you what to do, but when you move, we can't hear you, so.
Yeah, I've been having some technical dish, issues on this end. Sorry about that.
Okay, all right, keep going.
So I, I guess, to bottom this down, we are trying to minimize the amount of signals needed. We are trying to work this out and phase it in such a way that it removes traffic off of Route Three in order to try and to balance accessibility and connectivity and accessibility.
So just to add a little color to that, to your question, when we understand the concerns of having multiple access points along the perimeter, and of course, you know, housing impact, you shed, we want to keep traffic moving, we want to keep traffic on the site. So to Mr. Brooks's point and other, other members' point about building Goldmine Parkway sooner or later, and perhaps connecting it to the redesigned, relocated plan, I don't think they finalized a plan, intersection of Point 4. How does that all interact or intersect, maybe a better word? And we're going to work with VDOT and county on that front. It's just, just not done, so we don't know exactly how it's going to play out. Be warned for the light, we think there will have to be one signal at least at the intersection where the post office, post office location is. But I think what you're going to see is a very well-thought-out plan, infrastructure process, because it's not going to help us to have people stuck on Route 4, right? It's just not going to help us. So we want to get people on the site as quickly as we can, and off the site as quickly. And we have a captured audience, so if you think about folks staying, you know, within the development and walking to the restaurants, walking to the shopping areas, not getting in a car, that too is a benefit to, to the development. So a lot of factors here, but we think that we'll be able to, you know, do this in phasing. And how, how is it going to be paid for is always a big question. A lot of times that's paid for by the users that are coming in to develop the site. Of course, you know, we have to mitigate our impacts. We don't, we don't get, we don't get... We don't, we don't get a, we don't get a repass in that front, so we're going to have to build the infrastructure to mitigate those impacts. Hence the reason we're going to do a traffic study. Um, so we're going to work with the county, work with VDOT to make sure that we're, that plan is clear to everyone. But again, we're, we're going to want an efficient infrastructure process because it's going to harm us the most if we don't and I think we can have a way to play on that. Just a lot of unknowns right now, I'm going to say that with, you know, what's going to happen with the interstate relocation, intersection of twenty and three, now how that's going to play out and then the timing on, on Gold Mine Parkway is a good question, you know, I think that that's something we're, we're sure to get.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You fine?
Yeah.
Let me go to the phasing, the current slide we're on. Each of the phases are, have a color and I know this is, you know, sort of new information that's come out. Appreciate you putting that together, that's very helpful. Are each of those boxes, how many years are each of those boxes?
It's a, it's a forty year, uh, projection, so there's, there's six boxes, so about seven years from now.
Okay. And so if I turn your attention to the green box, which is thirty years from now, well, I guess it would start twenty-two years from now, right? Because that, that green box is seven years long and it starts twenty, so on, a year twenty-one, whatever, say twenty years out, the green starts. So, a regional park isn't even in the mix for twenty years.
Well, the park can come sooner than twenty years. Uh, one of the discussions we are, we've had with the county, something we need to flesh out is timing on dedication of that park. Our plan is to dedicate that land to the county and if the county would develop the park, so, you know, resources, staff, you know, how, when is the county going to be readily available to handle the park, to the restaurants? So, that, that's a question. So, we kind of put it out there, you know, if, if the county wants it sooner rather than later, then we could certainly, you know, work on it as well.
So, right now, the plan is to dedicate the park twenty years from now and then, and then the county's going to decide what we're going to do from that point.
Just a placeholder.
So, you're not planning to dedicate that land to the county any sooner than twenty years?
Again, I think that's a discussion, if, if the county wanted it sooner, that's something we could certainly.
You haven't got that here?
I'm hearing it. We have, we have had some discussions. It took a five years to actually adopt it because they want it, right? And so we held for five.
No, I'm just trying to understand. I don't want to get too deep into the details.
Just one of the challenges of putting something like this together is if I had a crystal ball and I could tell you right, right off the get, what this is going to look like ten years from now, five years from now, twenty years from now, I couldn't be doing this right now, something else. It's really difficult. So, what we try to do is build as much sort of flexibility in that process, so, hey, we want the park in five years, Charlie, we don't want it in twenty. I mean, that's, this is not an instance now, just there's a lot of flexibility.
Well, Charlie, just because that park is one of my pet peeves. Baseball field ain't changed. It's, it, it, the football field hasn't changed, so once you build that, it, it's there. I mean, some upkeep, but I mean, once that's dedicated, it's not, that's, that's not going to change in five or six years from you. I mean, that, that's space there.
That's, Mr. Chairman, just to, you know, you're making a good point here and I just want to tell you that the photos show a built football field. What I just heard is they're not actually building football.
I know, I know.
Well, that's what was the second point I was trying to make. So, what you are proposing is to give the land to the county and it's currently at twenty years. It's fine. It may be sooner if the county says, hey, we'll take it, you know, in a year or two, that's, the county could take that, but the county's going to get land and that's it. Okay. So, just want everybody to be clear on that one. And the same with the school site.
Correct.
Uh, so they're going to give the land, whatever the acreage is and we can have discussions about that. I don't, I, I'm not sure I'm, I know enough about, is it twenty-five or fifty or what have you? I think certainly a school site's going to be important for the, if this is a forty year plan, so that's a second item. I personally believe the park, uh, approach that you're taking in the neighborhood is a good one. Neighborhood parks, pocket parks, having connectivity between the parks, not just one central place. This regional park is someone, you know, in Gordonsville can come up and play soccer or there may be a soccer tournament or there could be a football or baseball league and they.
Forty minute drive.
Well, I, I mean, they may come, actually, they may come from, you know, they may come from, you know, New Jersey or Kentucky or Indiana.
Because ultimately that is the battlefield wilderness.
Right.
So, it is, it is a highly tourist, this is a spot.
Correct.
You can talk, we, we'll listen to you.
He, he's, he's reiterating what I said is that we're not, we're not saying you're getting twenty years, it's, it's a placeholder, so.
I got you. But I think that's important for the, because when I, when I look at this, it's the public, then we ought to put placeholder estimated time because the public needs to know this.
And we should show photos of it built out.
Right. I mean, I'm, I'm just taxpayers fifty percent. I want the public to understand what this is all about. I love what the concept is, okay? I'm not objecting to that. I think the county needs that. I think this area's going to need it with ten or fifteen thousand households in this, in this area, when you include all the households, which now leads to my next point, which is on transportation. So, there are two things that Route Three, uh, cannot have, safety problems and congestion problems. That is absolute bottom line, that's not me, it's me personally, I believe that, but it's VDOT, that is their sort of mechanism. And VDOT, you could say, I'm going to build, I'm going to give the land and build that interchange for Gold Mine Parkway at the relocated area. You could say that and proffer that, uh, and VDOT would say, you build it to our standards, we're good to go. So, you're not doing that, correct?
No, we've not said that.
Right. I'm just saying, just so we all know, this is not on a six year plan, it's not on any plan whatsoever. But you have the land there, you could proffer that land today in your proffer statement. That's what I understand. Um, you could proffer to build that interchange and not have a signal on Route Three. Uh, so it would not only remove the signal at the existing twenty, it would remove the signal there. So, there could potentially be two signals in this stretch, two traffic signals, if you, if, if, if the post office actually, uh, it generates the warrants for a signal. And so you have to go through the entire process for a traffic impact analysis for a signal to be approved and go all the way up to the transportation, uh, Commonwealth Transportation Board in order for that to happen at the post office. You're saying, we have an idea that with a development of this size, that's going to happen. Is that right?
You're talking about the?
The postal signals, yes. Yeah. And then there's the existing signal at twenty and twenty. Talk about for a second, the temporary signals, what's envisioned there?
Steven, do you want to, uh, talk a little bit about the temporary signals?
Sure, I can do my best. So, the, the intent of the temporary signals is to get traffic on and off of Route Three. Uh, essentially, the reason they're being temporary is in order to build a DDI, which is what VDOT is proposing, Route Twenty has to be realigned. And so, in essence, that DDI cannot be built until that realignment is, that is off site. And essentially, that is to serve as that interim measure.
And so for the commission members, a DDI is a diverging diamond interchange, which is the interchange that is contemplated for the relocated Route Three and Route Twenty. Is that correct, that's Steven?
Correct.
There's one in Zions, Ross, right?
Pardon me?
There's one in Zions, Ross, right?
Correct.
Oh, that's true.
I drive it every day.
You get there, you rely on what it must have supposed to be. I did not tell me this is driver's area.
Okay, so, so, let me move on to the, let me move on to Gold, Gold Mine Parkway. I love that name because I think it is truly the gold mine for this community. Uh, and the reason I say that is if it's done correctly, and I love the, the roundabouts and I know that'll be scary for some people, but they're one of the safest movements that you can have in a, in a roundabout scenario, um, in, in terms of severity of crash and injuries and fatalities. So, I think that sort of setup is a nice one, uh, on that Parkway. But that Parkway is, is sort of the, the spine and the life, you know, it's like the main artery of, of the development, right? So, so that artery, you know, moving, if, if, if you have the kind of proposed entrances off of Three, you're going to degrade the performance of Three and the purpose and safety around that. And you're saying, well, you know, we've got, you know, we need that so we can bring folks in. But what, what I think I'm concerned about is this notion of failing to sort of use Gold Mine Parkway in the, in the way that the GWAP envisioned it as the central artery in the development. And, and right now, it looks like there is a kind of a combination like Route Three and the G, uh, and the Gold Mine Parkway are going to get, be competing. And it's going to be like, when can I find the sort of, maybe it's a faster way to go this way and you're, I, I just think that's going to be a real problem for VDOT. Uh, and I think VDOT's mission is no signals on Route Three, uh, or as few as possible. In fact, they're trying to take signals off, which is why you put an overpass in, why you have the DDI interchange, because it, it, it allows that arterial to serve its purpose.
All right, people, we've got to over an hour. We need to start wrapping it down, not to cut your off, Mr. Nichols.
Well, you just cut me off, so.
Well, we need to wrap it down, but, but I'm going to give you the five minutes to kind of wrap it on in.
So, let me just, let me really understand what you're proposing. And then, well, based on this phasing plan, you're proposing the existing signal, Goodwin Drive to remain. You're proposing two future development entrances that, that go, um, I'm going to work my way from Goodwin to end of twenty.
Sure.
Uh, two existing future development entrances. You're proposing a, a potential signalized entrance at the post office road. You're proposing another future development entrance, uh, um, further to the east and then, um, I'm not sure if there's still going to be a proposed Van Clues, if that's a proposed, I know there's a temporary signal, but will that still be an entrance, um, in the future after the temporary signal comes off?
Steve, can I answer that real quick?
Yeah. So, the proposed temporary signal would either be at, uh, what, Gold Mine Parkway or Van Clues depending on the phasing of Gold Mine. Essentially, it's one or the other. The ultimate configuration is to try to have Van Clues restricted to a right in, right out, similar to the two other entrances between the post office and Goodwin.
So, it's still seven, seven, uh, conflict points on Route Three. I mean, that is unacceptable. I don't, I don't think VDOT's going to go for that and I understand you want to have visibility, but then that ties directly to this buffer issue. And that is a, that is, I think, almost as important, if not more important, than the transportation issue. Yet, because if Gold Mine is your spine, if Gold Mine is your artery that feeds everything in the development, that's where, uh, the development ought to be facing, not Route Three. Because we don't want people on Route Three looking and trying to figure out where to turn in. We want to guide them to key nodes to get into the development and that is the way it's the long-term vision of the GWAP we made. And I'm extremely concerned about the buffer, uh, about, about this picture, frankly, uh, whatever, page seventeen. If that picture does not change, this should not move forward. I mean, it's just not acceptable for this part of the county. And what you can say is someone's not going to come, but if you're building four, five thousand homes on Roundup and of, of the type that you're building and the kind of, uh, development that you're proposing, which, which I think will be a very positive for this part of the county, I think complies with what the intent of the GWAP, they're going to come and build here. They're going to want all this access, they're going to want Central Park and so I see something right off the road and I turn in a driveway.
All right.
That's, that's just not acceptable. Mr. Chairman, um, let me, I'll just, I'll stop there.
So, so here, here's what we're going to do. Um, we're starting, Mr. Nichols, everybody get two minutes, I'm going to stick you to two minutes to make a final point if you want to, okay? Two minutes.
Thank you. So, first of all, thank you for being here. This is an important part of the process and I know this is hard because we're asking, you know, a lot of detailed questions and, and Kenny, I really appreciate your commitment to Orange County. We envisioned in this county, and I've been here as long as the GWAP has, has been, I haven't been on this commission, but I've been here as long as the GWAP's been in existence, sort of a plan to develop this corridor. And what we are concerned about for a, for what is now a forty year development timeframe is that we do it to pay attention to some of those details because those details are important to the values that were expressed in the, in the GWAP. And I think many of the same values that you all share, but as with everything, the devil is in the details and we've got to work through some of those details. I think the phasing, uh, issues, we need to understand that so when we go to a public hearing, to public hearings, that the public fully understands. And that's going to be to your benefit frankly, uh, to clarify that for the public. Secondarily, uh, or second, a second matter is the transportation components and how, uh, Route Three is, is treated from a safety and congestion standpoint. And then, uh, this buffering issue, which I think is going to be central, uh, and, and was a critical piece of the entire GWAP. Uh, we appreciate you coming and working through some of these issues and items. I know we've got some work to do and I know you've got some comments you've got to take into consideration. I think the Board of Supervisors put some very good, uh, points out there and they, those should guide us, uh, certainly and, and we've got some working sessions with them that may refine some of those points. So, thank you for being here to work, uh, through these issues, but I, as a representative of District Five, I've heard from a lot of people and, and almost all of these issues come up every time I, I hear from them. And so, um, I appreciate the, the time that you've spent with us this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have anything additional to add to that.
So, I want to thank you also for coming. I, um, just would say that if, if I didn't know anything about the project and I had this, I'd be all over my representative, both the board and the planning commission to say, yes, bring this to Orange County. There's nothing about this that I'm seeing here that anybody who looks at it would not want, but guess what? This is not really what they're getting, so it's a little bit disingenuous and I'm not trying to call your hand, I'm just saying. Um, this looks good and I think the idea is good, but it's got to be in the details. Um, for example, I'm hung on this field and I saw it, like we could attach a school to this and we could eliminate a whole, but that's not what I'm getting. I'm getting trees and erosion and topography and all this other things. So, I would say that if you can get us to envision this and these and that be that, you got my support. I'm not saying you don't have my support, I'm just saying you got my support if you do that. I'm just saying that, and I don't want to do your work for you, you know what, I'm telling you how to do your project, but I have to do the work of the commission, I have to follow the GWAP rules and I really would like to see it kind of meshed together. To you, your staff and everyone out in the North Kenny, we've been, we grew up in this county together, we ate at the same table together. And he's, he's, so it's, it's not, it's, we're not strangers to each other at all and he knows me very well and he knows what sensitive buttons I have. In my last ten seconds, um. In my last 10 seconds, Mr. Capel said it right, I think it can be done. You all can do it. And I'm, I'm pushing for that it can be done, you all can do it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the message I've heard to my collectively from the commission members is that the GWOP is a concept. It's not, it's been sown, it will have to be modified at some point. However, there are some parameters and guidelines that truly are non-negotiable. And, you know, from that standpoint, we don't want to look like Loudoun. We don't want to look like Central Park. We want to look like we are a rural community as we are, but at the same time, it's progressive. And also that this development is a place to live, work, and play for residents that are coming down. You've got many things to, to go after. And as Mr. Capel again says, and Mr. Capel and I don't always agree, but his point being is this concept can be done, it should be done. And we want to work with you, not against you. I mean, at that point, Mr. Chairman, I can say to Mr. Capel.
Thank you, sir.
So, appreciate you coming. I, I don't agree that this was productive at all, honestly. I feel like we stated concerns and you just dug in and defended what you presented. And so I find it a little frustrating. I'll give you a perfect example. It's when I brought up these numbers on these, and this is critical. Because this, if, if this isn't right, the taxpayers pay. It also puts them, if they can say that we're going to make money, it means they don't have to give us anything. So you've said yourself that in most communities you work in, it's one person, one child per single-family home. That's exactly what I said, identical. And then you argued with me and told me I was wrong. And then later on, you conceded that I was right. So, you know, there are 2,355 single-family dwellings in this thing. By your own estimate, that's 2,496 children. Okay, so I don't think this Loudoun County thing is that far off. So your economic fiscal analysis shows 1,417 children. I'll bet you that in other places you work, these other numbers are, are pretty close as well. By using these numbers, it's almost three times as many kids, 3,471. So like, you know what, I'm, I'm trying to provide the data, right? Like, from a source, like, just dividing the number of people here, that, that's not a, it's not a very correct way of calculating children. Like, we want, you know, to actually have an honest conversation about things. I know I come off as a, whatever I come off as, as being anti-develop. I am not anti-develop. I said at the beginning, and Kenny, I've voted for things that you've done when you've come to the table and worked with us. I don't see any indication that, that you're working with us right now. You're going to stick to .37 kids per household in this, that's not working with us. That's being disingenuous, disingenuous with us. And it's forcing the citizens of this county to subsidize your development. And I don't like it. It's wealth redistribution, it's extracting wealth from this community and putting it in someone's pocket, potentially that doesn't even live in the county. So be, you know, as correct as you can about the numbers. Like, again, I, I presented it, you argued with me, and then later on, you basically confirmed that what I said at the beginning was correct. So I, I, you know, I don't feel like this was productive at all. I don't feel like you conceded a single thing. I don't think you acknowledged that any of us had any valid points. And so I don't find that to be productive at all. And I hope in the future, we can actually have an honest conversation about this project. Because it could be good. I, you know, it could be. It's not right now, that's all I have to say.
Okay, so we all took two, I'll give you three to wrap up if you'd like, or you don't have to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, thank you all, planning commission members and supervisors for Johnson, so thank you for your time. I, I would say that, you know, we have never said this is the final product. We've said this, I've said several times, this is a work in progress. We have been waiting for, and now we're excited, the input that we have received. And we will take that into consideration, work hard to try to find common ground on this. And we, we think we can get there. You can get everything you want, probably not, but we think we can get pretty close there. I think we could, I think we can get there. This is a big project. It's, it's a complex project. It's not, it's not going to be just my interpretation of it. It's going to be the community's interpretation of what makes it work. And we will provide data, that's real data, we, we have, it's data that's, it's your data. I, I didn't disagree with you, I'm just saying, I'm not going to use Loudoun County data because it's not Orange County, it's a big difference. So we, we want to work with you, Mr. Capel. We, we don't want to be adversarial, that's the last thing in the world we want to be. But also, my client has protected and ensured this is going to be a viable project. We just simply can't throw a concept out and go, it's going to work. It's got to work, it's going to be viable to the developer as well. So we think we can get there. It's a lot of pieces to it, from transportation, school impacts, the public safety, to parks. There's a, a bunch of stuff here that's got to be tackled. I think we can do it, and we're willing to work with you. That's not the question, and I hope we didn't come across that way. So thank you for your time.
We thank the advocate, we thank the county, we thank the commissioners for this part. We ask that we just go ahead and conclude that, like, right here, because it's a great part of the agenda. I would ask that the advocate be mindful of the things that the commission said and see if we can get to a happy resolution here. We're all humans, and we all can make it work if we work together with it. I think it can come together, I believe it will come together, we just got to work together. Thank you, Mr. Gillespie, thank you commissioners, thank you advocate. Let's move on to private road standards in Orange County.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is all business completed from your last meeting. There is no further recommendations, we'll comment on this item. It was continued from discussions your last meeting.
Is this something to go to public hearing or we can just do it?
We already did public hearing. I'm sorry, Mr. Gillespie.
We did public hearing.
Correct, that is, that is correct, you open and close the public hearing.
We need to, um, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask if you had anything on my last presentation. I apologize, I forgot. Do you have anything you want to add?
Not this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention, but he was still up.
Mark's quiet, so is mine.
All right, so we're looking at these general street design standards. How about it, Josh, tell us what, what, what do you say? You were supposed to hear something back in my notes saying from all the commissioners that have a burden against you, if they, if they want to call you and tell you what we want to do, or you have some idea.
Sure, so, Mr. Chair, the amendment before you would amend essentially a couple of sections. One relating to the applicability of road standards. And extend the application of private road standards that are currently by special waiver of the Planning Commission to all previously platted private road, developments showing private roads. That would be a change in policy to apply to those previously platted subdivisions that currently would be required, in most cases, to use public roads, would be allowed to build to the private road standards. And then furthermore, it changes the standards for private roads. Some are construction standards and, and most, especially in the standards for roads, private roads serving eight, nine, and 10 lots, that there would be an alternative pavement type, which would be in addition to the blacktopper, chimp and tar, and then also that there would be a gravel alternative.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, sir. So I'll just speak from my point of view. I, I, I'm trying not to be superbose, so this, to me, is, is just a non-starter. There's no way I would ever support this. Not only does it change the policy, but from, if I understand what Mr. Lansing told us, this actually doesn't really comport with what the General Assembly recommends on this sort of issue. So I don't, I don't understand how this does not put us in legal jeopardy. But if the General Assembly said five years, this grandfather's them in forever. So I don't know if that, I don't know. I'm just saying, we were presented that the General Assembly.
All right, hold on, let me get that answered.
Yeah, I can clarify that.
Clarify that.
So the General Assembly has essentially a minimum standard for vesting. The county can raise that if it wants to. So it is going beyond what the General Assembly has said, but it's not going against what the General Assembly has said.
Okay, so I understand correctly. So it's a, it's a very severe departure, because we're, we're basically saying that developments in 1960, you know, 62 years later, that's way off from five years. All that said, I sent some language around. From my point of view, I, I do agree that this is a little too restrictive. I, my position is that we could allow gravel roads for five lots using the middle standard on this chart. And I originally thought four was the right number. That's just based on being familiar with roads and what it takes to meet 10 road. But I changed it to five based on VDOT's standards that at five lots is when they require a, a more upgraded entrance. So that's where I am, and, you know, if we stick with this, I'm, I'm in a.
Where are you, uh, you just wanted to change the standards, but you did not want to apply to previously platted or apply to your standards to previously platted. D, just to make sure I get, I want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, well, if, if they're platted.
It's a two definition.
Yeah, yeah, no, I got it. So the, the standards would apply to, to everyone, past and present. They can have up to five lots with a gravel road, but the road would be built to this middle standard. I'm, I'm sorry, I should have brought what I suggested.
That's all right.
I did send it to everyone here, I sent it to Eric, I sent it to Josh.
So let me, let me, let me ask this question. Are you satisfied with the six-inch compacted aggregate base, D dot 21A or 21B stomach? Before it was saying VDOT standard, I think we just, there we're just, just, we're just actually defining what we want them to use.
What I'm proposing, what my text said was that we would go with the middle standard there, which was already in for five to seven lots by exception. The proposal that I'm suggesting is five lots. So this wouldn't apply anymore, nor would this. Only this middle standard would apply for one to five lots. And then everything else would be built to the VDOT standard. So anything above five lots would be built to VDOT standards.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I understand that, you know, there's a, there's a problem somewhere in search of a solution. And that problem in search of a solution is a major change in policy. And I think it's an error to change this policy. I, I understand it is, you know, what someone wants, but develop, someone who was a developer of lots does not want to turn the, build it at VDOT standards. And we know now, without a very specific clarity, that if they build it, VDOT takes it over. They will take it over at those standards. And so what we're proposing to do is sort of turn it into a bunch of gravel roads that I think will, is a major policy change. We have VDOT in existence, and that's what they're there for. And what we're proposing to do is a major change of policy that I think is, in, in 10 years or 15 years, we're going to regret making. I do not support this, and I'm going to have to vote no. I think it's bad public policy for the taxpayers of Orange County. And I think it's going to be a burden on Orange County in the long term.
Just a very quick add to Mr. Nichols' point. And so I, I agree at a very deep level, or very much of the, the lay with Mr. Nichols. My, all I'm trying to propose is some sort of stopgap. But I, I just want to point out to Mr. Nichols' point, if you look at our six-year spend plans, our own supervisors have requested close to a million dollars in taxpayer money to upgrade private roads in the past so that they can now be turned over to VDOT. So, you know, it's not a fake thing that these roads become a burden to the taxpayers. Like, our own supervisors, if you look at our six-year road plans, have requested money from the state to upgrade gravel roads that weren't built to VDOT standards so that they could be built to VDOT standards so that it could be turned over. Some of these are larger, but there are a couple of examples of small communities. I'd love to get into how some of these communities were selected. Because when I look at the map, I'm thinking to myself, you know, there's some other communities that could really have used that sort of request. Not going to get into that, but we know that it's, the taxpayers are going to pay.
So, let's, let's get beyond the standards taxpayers are going to pay, just for, just for this point. Who's going to enforce and what's going to happen when these roads don't come up to the standards that these subdivisions has been built pre, previously, and that's just not done? I'm just, let's just use an example. We've got 40 roads out there that are not at these standards, they're not done, they're not going to be grandfathered in. What appointed person, body, or whatever from Long's saying, that road, that road, that road's not there? And then what are we going to do? What, what are we going to do? It does not, it's not what we're talking about.
Because you're talking about, you're again talking about a problem that does not exist.
It will exist if we say they got to build it to these standards and they're not grandfathered.
They're not going to build it. If they, they're either going to build it or they're not going to build it.
No, they're built.
No, that's not what we're talking about. We're not talking about roads already built.
So previous were inspected, any of those that was approved recorded in the 2000. Because you say it's already approved.
But it's not built.
I don't, some of them have been.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think Eric actually, Mr. Lansing could probably add a little bit in, in better clarifying data relating to the section for established private roads. This provision would apply to what are sometimes called paper streets and paper, paper. This provision would apply to what are sometimes referred to as paper streets. And so what, what we have are platted subdivisions with lots of record that have no road that's been built. So this would, this would enable the development of those subdivisions, not to the public road standard otherwise required, but to the private road standard that is currently required to go to the planning commission for a special waiver. And so again, that's the difference between an established private road, established means built, even if it's partially built, it's established. If it's not been built at all, which we have many of, it is a previously pro, previously platted private road.
So, so then my point is, okay, they don't build it to the right standard. Who's going to police it?
It's just like houses, it's part of the building inspection.
It, it is, so at that point, they're doing land disturbance. And so we're measuring that land disturbance against the standards. Just answering, that's just answering the question.
That frustration wasn't for you, it was just, just an expression of, I'm baffled. Okay, I've been a minority before, I guess I would be.
Family?
Yes, you can.
My challenge with all of this is, it's like playing a game of some type, football, basketball, or whatever. There are rules and regulations that the game is played by. And they were established a long time ago. To make a significant change, alteration of those rules and regulations, to me, creates a hardship twofold. Creates it on the person that owns the property. Creates it on the person that owns the property. And using myself as the example, I own a farm. What if they say, somebody comes in and says, "Mr. Ance, you got to put in a conservation..." And I don't want to do that. Or, "Mr. Ance, you've got to comply with all the Chesapeake Bay Act, and you've got to do this fencing, and you've got to cease from using this part of your land, et cetera." My family's owned that land for a hundred years. And to do that to a citizen, to me, is not fair, number one. And number two, I don't argue the point, and you all have heard me say, if I had my way, all property interests of me and I let out roads should be able to handle school bus, fire and rescue. It's a given because of a safety measure. But at the same time, to take somebody and all of a sudden, you know, they've been paying, I assume, on those lots individually from an assessment standpoint, rather than having it in a land use or something for the last twenty, thirty years. To me, it is not consolable in good faith of dealing with our citizens, nor in fairness to everybody.
That's all I have to say.
So, I agree with so much of what you said, but I guess my question is, we changed this in April the ninth, two thousand nineteen. It was...
We changed it in fourteen to fifteen, if I remember.
It was in fourteen, I think it was, or fifteen, it was changed. And then we back... So between fourteen and nineteen is five years, between nineteen and twenty-one is three years. Every three years, it seems like we got to mess with these roads, because we either Something's not right. So here's what I'm opposed to. This is what I like, I mean, everybody says what they like. One to seven. And the only reason I went to seven is because the state said five, I gave you two more, just to try to pacify. Yeah, I'm not arguing that the seven is the great number. The state said we were taking it at five. I picked up seven, because I think it's a perfect number, but I picked up seven because it gives them two more than the state says, it takes in some consideration for hardship. Because after you get over seven lots, you're really getting pretty big in a subdivision, in my opinion. I'm not saying Jason's five is wrong, I'm just saying I picked seven. I picked seven just because it's two more than the states that they were taking. But I'm also saying that I agree with Mr. Capel, that the top one and the bottom one should come out. Everything else conforms. And, but I'm also grandfathering anything back before two thousand and when we changed ordinance last time, about two thousand fifteen, whatever it was, stay there. If this subdivision is completed, and that's what I'm going to turn to the county to say, the county attorney to say, if we say that you do not have to comply with these new things if you finish it in the next two years, can we put a sunset clause on it, so that anybody after two years, if they don't go and undo it, you're stuck?
In other words, there's a grandfathering, but there's a two-year expiration.
Only two years. Or three years. Sure. Whatever it is. All I'm saying is, I'm not trying to leave all these roads out here to somebody saying, I'm not trying to go to the pity of whatever, but I'm saying, okay, I'm going to give you a three-year notice. This is where you got to be. And if you don't do what you got to, because if you haven't done something, and Teister's on a point, take a George statement here, we always agree, but he's on a point. If you ain't done something from two thousand twelve to now, you probably got a whole lot of issues that ain't going up the turn, so you got more issues than what's there. But if I give you a three-year window to fix what's wrong, I'm giving you a slice of the pie. Just throw that out there on the table, guys.
So are you saying to someone who said twenty years, they're going to get now three more?
Three more years, if you ain't got it done in the next three, too bad.
Can I answer one question, Lee Roy? Was the approval by the county bodies, planning commission, and board of supervisors considered contractual agreement?
No. Why not? It's not approved by the supervisors, George. It's a signature from the planning department.
Maybe we should ask, as a point of clarification, which approval you're referring to?
Well, the fact that they have been grandfathered and have not complied with the standards that existed at the time of the approval of the platted subdivision.
Right. I just want to clarify, that's all. Are you referring to the approval of the changes and the ordinances?
No, 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 no. I'm saying...
I wanted to rule that out.
When that plat was approved as a subdivision...
Right.
By the planning commission, planning department, then the board supervisor, is that considered a contractual agreement?
You're talking about the approval of the plat?
Yes.
Okay. So, no, it isn't, but it does share some things in common with the contract that I think are what you might be getting at. So, you have vested rights to do whatever the plat says that you can do for five years. Does that make sense? So it does...
So the state's giving you five years to finish what you said.
That's right. The approval of the plat does confer some rights on you. It's not a contract, but it does confer some rights.
Can we parse this apart a little bit? Because this is like, it's a little frustrating, right? So, because we went through this already, right? First of all, some of them were never approved by anyone. Some of them, they just went down and filed it, and there wasn't a planning authority. Okay? None of them were approved by the board supervisors. None of them were approved by the planning commission.
In that case, in those cases, others were approved by the planning commission.
Where did we approve a subdivision?
So there was a period of time in the nineteen eighties or the early nineties where the planning commission wasn't...
That was my point.
Right. So, but let me also say that under the current code of Orange County, subdivisions that are proposed for less than forty lots are not required to come to this planning commission. So anyone that brings in a thirty-nine lot private road subdivision, you do not see it. I see it. As long as they meet all the standards, it's purely ministerial, is not broad before this law.
Okay. We're on a clarification, I'm quick. In that case, on a thirty-nine lot subdivision, they have to meet certain standards, and we're going to decimate those standards. So they're going to have, there's the potential for a thirty-nine lot subdivision with two inches of gravel or asphalt. Why put asphalt in there? We're never going to put asphalt. It's ridiculous that we even have that in there. And we don't even have chip and tar in there. So, like I say, this is really bad policy. It's a major change in policy, but I think...
Well, we wouldn't have that, Mr. Nichols, we wouldn't have that now. We would... That thirty-nine wouldn't be there now, if it, based on the analysis that you have.
What he's saying is, and I forget what the largest one was, but there was a platted subdivision, what's the biggest one you've come across?
I think that's a question from the last...
What's the most lots that we have right now?
So in a previously platted...
Yeah, what we're talking about. You showed us one that had like thirty...
No, I showed one with twelve.
Twelve, okay. Well...
But I mean, I'm sure I could find one.
And you went to thirty-nine just to...
No, no, no.
Correct. But whatever, the one he showed us. I mean, we basically reduced our standards, and they said, they said when they subdivided it, they were going to build it appropriately. And now we're... They're coming back. This is a for-profit entity that is going to make money off of other citizens, and we're going to say, we don't really care about the standards, because we're lowering them to the smallest level you can get.
No, I thought we said that after seven lots, after seven lots, you have to go to a different road standard, is what I'm saying here. Now, the one through seven, you're fine, and after seven, you got to go to the private road standard. Is that not what we're saying?
That's what I proposed, five, and you've proposed seven, but you've gone a step further and said, hey, if you hurry up and do it in three years, never mind.
Well, because I'm trying to, and honestly, I'm trying to grandfather out the confusion and the frustration.
How are, Mr. Chairman, how are we going to explain this to the public? How are we going to truly explain this change in policy to the public? I think this is...
I don't know how we explain any of the other changes we did to the public.
I think this is more confusing.
I think one of the things we say here, I mean, that's a, Mr. Nichols, that's a very good statement, but what did the public know in fourteen, what did the public know in nineteen? Because they had the same amount of public here and there, because I was privy to that, that's hearing that. And every time you get an issue like this, when somebody goes to a board member and say, "Hey, I got a problem right here, this doesn't work," and we get this, remember how we got this? This was from the board down to us. It wasn't us up to the board. Some board member has determined, well, the board has determined and consensus that this needs to come back to the planning commission, and we need to do, we need to change this. That's what the board has said. Whether we want to change it or not, I guess that's our prerogative, but the board said change it. And how I know that, because it came from the board to us. So I hear what you're saying, but there's a complaint factor out there somewhere that has caused the board to, for us to look at this. And other things. All I'm trying to do here is, I've heard it on both sides. We can lock our heels in this adult one, and we want this for the county, that's what we want. There it goes. And I can tell you what happens with that. I've seen it happen in Orange County many times. The folks that want to do something different, they lock their heels in, and they're coming here, and we'll end up, and this is what we're going to do right now in this county, trying to repair some of the things that the changes of the board will do to you quickly in this county. It will just upset the apple garden. So try to be politically advantageous here and say, okay, I get it. Somebody's got a complaint, somebody's not happy. Let me give you three years to get your stuff together. If you're not, now is the time for construction movement. It is advantageous right now. So if I give you three years to get it together, there you go. You don't have to like it, Mr. Nichols, I don't necessarily like it.
No, I don't understand what you're saying. I'm not saying I don't like what you're saying. I want to understand it. So why is now the time to do all this?
Because the board said we had to.
No, the board recommended, the board did not say we had to do it. The board said, we recommend that you do this. And so we're discussing the policy around...
That's what I'm saying, you're saying why is the time?
The board did not say anything about a grandfathering for three years.
No, I use that, I mean, that is part of the working...
The board didn't say anything about one to seven lots. I mean, I'm trying to figure out, you know, we're creating something that maybe the board isn't, doesn't even want. Can I... So, two things.
What does the board want then?
They want...
That's what I'm telling you, I'm trying to give you...
This is what they want.
Mr. Chairman, it seems to me we have two, we have two choices. Okay, we either vote on this up or down, that's one choice. I'd be happy to make a motion, what I, how I think we should vote on this. The other option is to once again postpone this, so that we can get, because we can't even, the language that we're talking about, you know, if it's five or seven, or, we can't even really vote on it, because we don't have it written down. So I think our only option here is to either vote this up or down, and send it to the board, or delay it to the next meeting, and ask the staff to take the language, partly what I floated around, and partly whatever you're saying now, and present different language at the next meeting.
Mr. Johnson still on? Mr. Johnson, can you tell me what the board's intent was when they sent this back to us?
Well, I can't tell you what every board member's, this is a, this, as you all know, this is a very difficult issue, and it's got about a thousand different heads. And this, this policy has been revised half a dozen times over the last dozen years. And it's because every time we, you know, it's been changed, it, a few years down the line, you realize it creates some problems that you didn't anticipate. So, I mean, I don't remember specifically what, I can't give you five bullet points of what the board was looking at, beyond the fact that Mr. Gillespie, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Mr. Gillespie was dealing with a lot of these issues of roads that were platted but never built, some of them decades ago. Mr. Gillespie proposed, using the state language, which is to limit it to five years, and the board wasn't comfortable with that. And so you have what you have in front of you now. Now, Josh, is that a, is that a, am I fairly accurate in how that came about?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Johnson, that is correct.
Okay. And Josh, would, help me out here, I'm, you need to cut me a little slack. This is my first day of vacation, and I got to the vacation rental and promptly fell into a batch of yellow jackets. So it hasn't been the greatest evening. And so my brain is not firing on all cylinders. Josh, what did we, when the board, can you tell the planning commission what the board changed in your proposed wording, other than removing the five-year?
Mr. Johnson, you are correct, they did, they changed nothing else. So that was, that was the major change, was that there would be some period of time. Again, one of the complications in all of this is that previously platted subdivisions that are put on record have created fourteen hundred lots, give or take, that are dependent on a private road that's not been built. And so that's just the rough quantification of what we have that's not been built, and it's built to, and when that road is to be built, the question is, what standard will those roads be built to?
Okay, but my question was, Josh, what you presented to us was, there were several different changes, and I think the only one we really, the board backed off on was the five years. Am I correct in that?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The other changes are what, I mean, there are a couple changes to the road construction standards. So I itemized those and what they are. The largest one is that, at the highest level for the eight, nine, and ten lots, that it does not just apply the asphalt or chip and tar paving standard, but also allows a gravel paving standard alternative. So that's a, that's a, that's a big change. And then there are a couple other changes in the table that relate to, again, the road construction, design and construction standards.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Josh one more question?
Sure.
Currently, when you arrived in Orange County, we were not enforcing any kind of five-year rule or ten-year rule, correct? We were basically, if someone had a platted road that was fifteen years old, and they brought it in, and everything else was fine, that moved through. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The policy has been, and really continues to be, that existing established private roads are on that sliding scale of three to ten lots. And so within that three to ten, three to four have one standard, five, six, and seven lots served by a private road have the second standard, and then lots eight, nine, and ten have the third standard. And anything more than ten lots is required to be built as a public road, to public road standards.
But the, but the five-year timeframe that you suggested be adopted, that, that doesn't exist currently. That's why you suggested it be adopted, correct?
That is correct. In consultation with the county attorney, it was that to be consistent with state standards that, or state minimum standards, as Eric said, that there be a five-year expiration.
So deleting that, when the board deleted that, that five-year standard, they were just maintaining the status quo?
Correct. Changing the road construction standards, but changing, but keeping the status quo on them, yes.
Okay.
Now, the big difference again is...
Chairman, I don't know if that, if that helped or not, but...
Oh, it helped rightly, it helped rightly, it just kind of puts us where we are.
Okay.
All right, don't leave us, brother, but we will keep you on one. We're going to have to go back to vacation. We're gonna get you back to vacation, so, um.
My only point on that, on this, on this matter is that that change is, is, hey, and I think I talked about this at the last meeting, that we're not even complying with what the, you know, what the, what the, this, the minimum, I, I think the way you described it was the minimum standards that are already set out, so. And, and then as a result, we, we, then we lowered the standards, and I think that's just bad public policy. I think it's, uh, and so, look, I'm, I, it's just a viewpoint, and we can all have viewpoints, but
And we do, and that's.
that, that does change that substantially.
Can you explain it again?
Yeah, I, I think that there may be some confusion between the grandfathering clause that's in the state code, which is five years, versus the sunset clause in our grandfathering clause. And although they're both five years, they really have nothing to do with each other. I'm sorry, this is really confusing. Josh, I believe the five-year clause that you were just discussing was a, a sunset clause on the grandfather, right?
That's right, that is correct.
Okay, so the idea is.
So, that's, is that ten years then?
No, 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 no. The idea is, if you have a plat that was approved, who cares how long ago? Four years, five years, a thousand years ago? Then for five years, you have just five years only to build that lot. The county is giving you an additional five years to build that from the date of the enactment of this ordinance before you then lose your rights to whatever was guaranteed in that plat. Now, that's what Josh had drafted as the proposal for this commission. And that's completely different from the five years that the state code talks about. What the state code says is that when you get a plat approved, you have five years from the date the plat was approved to build according to whatever that plat gave you the right to build. So, they may be the same amount of time, but they're triggered by two totally different events. They arise from two totally different sources, one from what Josh proposed to add to the county code, one from the state code. So, it's, it's, it's a.
All right, all right, I'm completely confused, so let me ask some questions to help myself here.
Yeah.
I came in in April the ninth of two thousand and nineteen, and I had a plat approved.
Yes.
The state code says I have to do what by when?
You still have, if it was approved on April two thousand and nineteen, you still have the right to build according to whatever that plat told you you could until April of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
That is by state code regardless of anything we do today.
Okay.
But let's suppose on the other hand that you had a plat approved in nineteen seventy, you lost that right in nineteen seventy-five to do whatever that plat told you you could do. In this case, if Josh's proposal had been adopted, let's just pretend that Josh's original draft of this ordinance was adopted, you would then have until two thousand and twenty-six to build your private road according to your plat that was approved in the nineteen seventies.
Because from the time we enact the ordinance is the time that clock starts for what Josh was.
Exactly.
So, so Josh was kind of proposing what I was proposing, he was doing five, I was doing three. That's kind of where I was going, that's why you confused me there. I got it, the state says you lose rights in five years. But we were saying, we're gonna do a little, the county said we're gonna do better. You got five years of the time, you, this, this ordinance goes into effect to get it done.
Right.
Okay.
Whereas if this proposal is adopted the way it's raised now, you have until all of forever to build that private road.
Right.
As long as it was once proved at one point once upon a time.
And that's what the board has sent to us. So, they have said, you have forever.
That's right.
Right, okay.
And all I'm saying is.
That's what this is saying.
This is what this is saying. This is saying you got forever on those lots. Better than that, in two thousand and twenty-one, when they come in, these upper things were gonna apply, and you gotta get them built to these standards. So, that's only grandfathering what's out there. That's not letting new developers come in here and pick up. The new developers have to follow whatever we get in this chart. Is that correct? That's where I was, no, I was doing this.
No, that's not correct. Anyone who came in in twenty eighteen?
No, I'm saying new, I'm saying two thousand and twenty-one folks.
No, they're grandfathered in.
Well, I'm talking about from this point on, I, I'm just, from tonight, if we agree with this tonight, from tonight, they move on to, um, tomorrow morning, somebody comes in with, and we, I'll just use an example. This is enacted, they would have to follow whatever we have up here.
But you give them forever.
Well, let's, i- if I may, if I may, Mr. Chair, just to provide the, the fore and what, what is occurring, if a new development plan is proposed in two thousand and twenty-one, then it needs to comply with today's code standards.
Right.
If a new developer shows up to develop these forty, fifty-year-old platted subdivisions, they would use the standards that would apply to private roads.
Right.
And if a new developer shows up and does not want to build a public road, they have the right, they have the right to petition, to commission for a waiver to build a private road, but the bar to, to approval of that waiver is very high. And Mr. Lanting has spoken to that, uh, multiple times. And, and some places don't have a bar that's that high. So, I'll, I'll just go on record and say that, the bar is high in Orange, it's, it is lower in other places by choice. And so, that is, that is your policy.
So, did you write this based on what you thought the board wanted?
I can, I conferred with counsel on, on what was brought forward.
So, did you, did you, does counsel advise him that that's typically what the board wanted, not as legally sound?
My understanding is that Tom Lanting consulted with the board members in establishing what the board wanted, then he and Josh worked together on this amendment.
That is correct. We, we were asked to look at the road construction standards, and we were asked to look at providing a grandfathering or, in perpetuity.
So, all I'm saying, all I was trying to say earlier is, we are lowering the standard. Like, we have lowered the bar, which, look, we, we can do whatever we want, right? We could, we could say, you don't even need gravel, you can just leave it dirt. Private road, who cares? Leave it dirt, what's two inches of gravel?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's ludicrous that this language would allow a developer to buy something that was platted in nineteen seventy and then just build, build like a gravel road. And that's, and, and then, you know, you heard Eric say that the folks actually lost their rights five years after they did it. So, we're gonna like, we're gonna give them back retroactively, so anyways.
I, I hear what y'all are saying, but I, and, and, but I, I also, I, I'm not getting that, okay, you bought nineteen seventy lot, just that, that buyer though is not gonna say, give me a pick pass to my house. He's gonna say, what kind of road are you gonna give me to my house? I mean, you go to buy a house, a lot of houses, there is some logic to think that the, I know Virginia's a buyer be worst, but there's a logic to think that to market it, you're gonna have to have a certain markability there. And do some people not care? Absolutely, but let's talk about the majority here, the majority.
Well, we're not, this is, this is not, this is point of fact that's not actually accurate, because someone wants this. Someone wants to lower the bar. And so, and there's whatever reason, they think they can, you know, it's, hey, it's, it's a world.
Are they lowering the bar, or they're just saying, I wanna build it a different way from what V Doc says I have to do it? It's, they're two different things.
Come on, they, they're saying they can't afford to do it. They can't sell the lot if they build a real road, I mean, come on. I mean, this is just, folks wanna make more money, that's all. And then they wanna put off dealing with this situation until someday, some board member gets, someone gets their ear and potentially asks for taxpayer money to.
Says, hey, we gotta upgrade this, this is, you know, it's become a safety problem. You know, they, they couldn't even get the ambulance back when, when my aunt was here. And, you know, and then we're, then we're.
Okay, Mr. Brooks? Yes, I think we need, you got to say.
I think it's like we have the choices, either to try to get something better drafted or to vote this up and down. What, what's your?
My, my feeling is we get something better drafted. We, we don't do ourselves no justice by just voting something up or down just because we feel a piece of cake out of it. I don't necessarily know that that, it, it, when's our next meeting, Mr. Chairman?
Um, Mr. Commissioner, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt there.
I can be, Mr. Commissioner.
Yeah, you're both.
Just before you book off anything, I don't know how to go.
So, so we, we're dealing with two different issues here. And while they're very related, I, I think legally, we have to separate them. One is the proposal that the board has given us, that's the one that was publicly advertised. That's the one that's in the agenda.
It's good.
And that has to have a vote. Now, the commission can make modifications to what the board has proposed, but what is being talked about as an alternative is a completely different idea. It has to do with the same code section, but it's a completely different proposal, it would have to be publicly advertised.
We got you, we got you.
The commission has the authority to initiate that, but it's a separate idea.
Do we have the authority to delay it until we came, come up with what we think is better language than what's proposed?
Up to a hundred percent.
Sure, but at the end of the day.
But you can't change this language whatsoever.
What we have here needs to have an up or down vote.
Yeah, okay.
It, it can be edited, but it still has to be the same basic language.
Because we've had a public hearing on this language.
That's right. So, but I still think the consensus is that we can, when, when do we meet again?
November seventh. I was gonna say October twenty-one, excuse me.
October twenty-one. Is it okay within the day of when we got it to, uh, this is board initiation, we don't have the timeframe, do we?
Uh, well, I have to defer to the attorney, and I, I assume that the timeframe still applies, but you'd be making, essentially, you know, failing to make a recommendation is recommending approval, so.
I won't that one though.
Um, we can't win tonight.
We can't, I'm flattered.
What I'm hearing is that.
You're beating up a Jesus out of my head.
What I, what I'm hearing is that the, the new language, we need a public hearing. So, if we wanna delay this and hold the board up from doing anything while they wait for whatever language we propose, and I don't even know if they're gonna consider it to begin with, I'm all in favor of telling them what we think should be done, that's fine with me. But I don't see any.
We can always re-advertise, I think the better thing to do, not to cut you off with that, let's postpone this until our next meeting, and we will. We will, at our next meeting, can I get a consensus, at our next meeting, we will vote something up or down, and that's the end of it.
Well, a, as long as we can get something advertised before the next.
Now, what about advertising? We just, no, we just gotta, we gotta, we gotta deal with this.
Well, we, we can't advertise before your next meeting.
We can't, no, we gotta, we'll just deal with this, and we can do some, some twerks, but not many.
Well, but what's, what's the point?
We could, we could change, oh, wait a second.
We can, can we?
If, if, if we consider the language, we could make any number of amendments, right?
You can, but at a certain point, if you're deviating from the idea that was publicly advertised, you're going to need to publicly advertise again for the, and it's going to have to come towards a new initiative.
Okay.
Um, you can recommend whatever you want, but at a certain point, it's a different subject altogether than what the board has given you, and it's gonna have to come towards a new initiative.
But you already had it in writing, is that too far different?
No, it isn't, but it's not here for us to consider. And, and what, uh, oh, oh.
Well, but it is for this though.
Yeah, Eric or what I sent.
Yeah, this is way different.
Is that substantially different that it would need to be publicly re-advertised?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll make a motion to delay this to the, whether it's the twenty-first or the seventh.
Let's do it till the twenty-first.
Okay.
Ooh, uh, is, is, there's a.
Sorry, go.
Yeah, all the things say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Let me yawn that, folks, I don't know, we're not just gonna, we're just gonna, sorry, George. Mr. Johnson, you got anything else you wanna say to us? Board of supervisors.
I, I think not.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gillespie, is there anything else you wanna say to us?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I have, um, no reason to further defer here, or further delay here either.
Any commission got any other comments they need to make?
Amen.
The next, the next meeting date is October the twenty-first. I solicit a motion to adjourn, and before we adjourn, I will comment. Thank you all for the, um, expertise, your guidance, and your thoughts and your processes. And I apologize if I cut anybody off too quick or hurt anybody else too fast. It was not my point, it was just trying to go to meet, no one. And I do not take what you do lightly, because I know what you do, because I'm doing it right with you. Now, I solicit a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, we move to adjourn.
All, all the things say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and, uh.